Call the December 6th City Council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we come once again thankful for all that you continue to do in this city. Thankful, Heavenly Father, for allowing us to be servants. We ask you continue to lead, guide, and direct us, and all that we shall say and do shall be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless these, Heavenly Father, that in the chambers and in all the residents of this city, in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On December 6th, eighteen eighty-four, in Washington DC, workers placed a nine-inch aluminum pyramid atop a tower of white marble, completing construction of impressive monument to the city's namesake and the nation's first president, George Washington. Made of some thirty-six thousand blocks, marble and granite spiked five hundred and fifty-five feet in the air, the monument was the tallest structure in the world at the time of its completion in December of eighteen eighty-four. More than eight hundred thousand people visit the monument each year. A city law passed in nineteen ten restricted the height of new buildings to ensure that the monument will remain the tallest structure in Washington DC. Fact of the day.
Mr. Coleman, did you get that phone turned off?
All right. Got some minutes? Anybody need to adjust, or if not, look for a motion to approve, minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Gender review? Anything? Cliff?
The only thing is, as you know, Mr. Maverick is unavailable due to illness, and I will be handling his three items later in the agenda. Other than that, nothing new, sir.
Okay, all right. Next up, got the proclamation for the city general election for two thousand twenty-four. So I just need to read this into the record. March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, city general election, City of Apopka, Florida. Whereas in accordance with the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the City of Apopka, Florida, an election shall be held on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at which election there shall be elected a commissioner for seat three and a commissioner for seat four, both for four-year terms. And whereas the terms of office for commissioner seat three and commissioner seat four will expire at twelve PM on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, it is therefore necessary that a commissioner for seat three and a commissioner for seat four be elected at an election of the City of Apopka, Florida. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, as required by law, do hereby proclaim and pronounce that an election will be held in the City of Apopka, Florida, on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from seven AM until seven PM, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for seat three and a commissioner for seat four. Voting precincts will be determined by the Orange County Supervisor of Elections. Each voting will be available through the Orange County Supervisor of Elections office and will coincide with their designated sites and times, from Monday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, through Sunday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Only the voters of the city residing within the city limits who are properly registered with the Orange County Supervisor of Elections, or who will be properly registered by February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, may vote in this election. Candidates for said offices must qualify with a city clerk. Pre-qualifying began at twelve PM on Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and qualifying begins at twelve PM on Thursday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at twelve PM and ends on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, in the city clerk's office located at City Hall, one-twenty East Main Street, Apopka, Florida. The Orange County Canvassing Board is hereby authorized to canvass the City of Apopka ballots voted in the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four city general election in compliance with ordinance number twenty-four thirty-six and sections thirty-four dash forty-one of Apopka Code of Ordinances. In the event it becomes necessary to have a runoff election, that will be held on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from seven AM to seven PM at precinct nine-one-zero-four Apopka Community Center and five-nine, five-one-nine South Central Avenue, Apopka, Florida, and precinct nine-two-zero-four Northwest Recreation, thirty-seven-ten Jason Dewey Parkway, Apopka, Florida. I Brian Nelson hereby appoint the canvassing board for said runoff elections as follows. The canvassing board will be City Commissioner Alexander Smith, City Commissioner Diane Velazquez, and City Clerk Susan Bone. In witness therefore, I have unto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Apopka, Florida, to be affixed and attested by the City Clerk of Apopka, this the sixth day of December, two thousand twenty-four. There we go. Okay. All right, next up, presentation. We've got the Amazing Shake competition. We want to, well, first off, we're gonna run the video. If you want to click, are you, okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Nelson, for our team's writing, doing the elementary here. Thank you, Commissioners.
See a very short video of our Amazing Shake Club and our Dream Lake ambassadors. I am Carol Anne Clinton Martin, the very proud principal of Dream Lake Elementary.
All right.
As you can see, this is not just about our ambassadors, but it's also about bringing our community together. Now you're gonna hear from one of our top ten Amazing Shake participants, Christopher Caperton.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Chris. I Brian Nelson, City Commissioners and other guests. So before I joined Amazing Shake, every time I'd get asked a question, or I had to, like, do something, I had to talk, I couldn't do it because I'd just get too nervous, or I would just stumble my words. I just couldn't do it. So Amazing Shake helped me by this little thing called Work the Room, is you go around, meaning as many people as you can, and you have to have a one-on-one conversation with them. And it helped me answer questions and talk to people without stumbling my words, and it helped me talk to y'all now, being here. Now I hear from Tyson.
Hi, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners. My name is Tyson, and I am one of the fifth grade ambassadors for Dream Lake Elementary. And one thing in Amazing Shake that has helped me is being confident. Being confident has helped me by, like, when I'm talking to people, I don't get as nervous anymore, and I can express my feelings to them. And another thing that confidence helps me with is personality, because I don't get, I don't, I can express my feelings to people without giving, getting nervous. Onto Edeline.
Hi, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners and other guests. My name is Edeline Rodriguez, and I'll be here speaking to you how Amazing Shake have helped me. Amazing Shake has helped me because before I was in Amazing Shake, I would never participate to anything. I will always just be in class, just sitting there, doing nothing. But now, since I got into Amazing Shake, and now I participate, and now I'm into, like, clubs, and Amazing Shake have helped me also is that when I was there and I was doing, like, their activities, I, my hand was weak like a fish. And, and as I was going through more Amazing Shake things, I start have my, no, I should say, my hand is now firm, like, I'm supposed to have it in Amazing Shake, and I, what did I gotta say? Onto Kylie.
Hi, Mayor Nelson, Commissioners and other guests. In case you didn't catch it, my name is Kylie, and we will be going to the Global Amazing Shake Competition in Atlanta, Georgia, at Ron Clark Academy. But in order to do that, we need support. We have worked very hard to get into the top ten. With your help, we could go to the competition and fulfill our dreams. Now we're on to Bennett.
Okay, so who's ready to be our sponsors? So let's give a round of applause for our ambassadors. They are going to present a sponsorship envelope to the Commissioners. In times past, when we've gone, we've been able to fund this independently, but we have expanded, and we have extended how many participants that we had top five, now we have top ten, which also includes top ten chaperones to attend, so we are asking for support. So thank you so much.
Can you give us kind of a, what, what your goal is trying to reach? I know it's a big one, but, but we don't, we don't put it out there. People that want to help won't know.
Okay, so for the twenty individuals, meaning the ten ambassadors and potentially ten chaperones, including hotel accommodations and registrations, and I do like to take them by air, not by bus, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars.
So.
Yes.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out. Obviously, this, this will get out on, it'll be on YouTube tonight, for the ones, those that don't see it today, so hopefully we'll get some, some other local businesses to help out as well.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, what a great group.
Thank you.
We're gonna get a picture right down.
Hold on, what's the, what's the deadline for you to need those funds?
So in order to get through our approval status with Orange County for the field trip, we are looking at mid-January. So we know that, we have some other things in the fire, but this is just a quicker, bigger way to get this done. So that's why we took this opportunity. Also, it's great practice for our ambassadors to have an opportunity to, you know, have, to communicate, and to communicate with people who make decisions in our community. So in addition to, yes, it would be wonderful for them to get the funding, mid-January is the deadline, but for also great practice for our ambassadors.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, public comment. Susan?
I said, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine-one Roland Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. I wanted to talk to you, we had an incident over in Rock Springs Ridge, we had a noose hanging. But before I get to that, I want to remind everybody what I always remind you of. In the City of Apopka, state of Florida, and in our country, we're in a national crisis. Too many good people are sitting by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. We are all the leaders in one way or another, so if you see something that's wrong, it's time to stand up and say no more. We will not tolerate it. Over in Rock Springs Ridge, this noose was hung last year, the year before. We contacted HOA, we voiced our opinion, how hurtful it was to us. When you hear the Jewish community says, never again the Holocaust, well, when it comes to racism and slavery, it don't have that same sting. Now, we went to the board, the HOA board, and filed a complaint, and the same house that did it last year did it again this year. So what that tell us as citizens who went and made that complaint? I posted it on Nextdoor, I even got one of the HOA boards said, because when I posted a post, I said, hate and racism will destroy America one day. And it will. If we don't stand up and say no more, we're not gonna tolerate hate and racism and corruption. We have to do that. And so I'm bringing this to you. I know we're going into the spirit of the holidays, and we're talking about Jesus, we're talking about love, we're talking about caring and giving. Let's do that year-round. Let's start this season and carry that over to next year. When I look at the news, and I look at, that was presented to everybody here, and last commissioner meeting, nobody said anything, nobody spoke on it. So without you telling me directly, indirectly, you tell me it didn't bother you. This is another incident that happened this year. Over in the overlooks, you had closer about fifteen cars, twelve to fifteen cars, spray painted, used the word nigger and this and that. Well, I looked for weeks to try to find anything on the news about it, didn't happen. Then only with my persistence, going to the news, we, we finally got Chief McKendrick to speak on it. But to my surprise, I've been knowing this for a while, there's a, there's a video of some young men's, that same timeframe. That video, to my knowledge, haven't been shown to the public, and I want to know why, because if you post a video, somebody may see something that they can identify that individual with. Then I was reading one of the local papers where there was another video that they're gonna send off to have examined. Why not do the same thing with this video? So when I see things that don't make sense to me, and I'm not the resident expert, but anybody can see just by applying common sense that it's not right, and we need to stand up and we need to do something about it. Remember, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth, and sometime we do it to the point where people don't even care about the truth anymore. Please, it's time for change. To all elected officials, and if we hold each other to these standards, principle matters, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, morals matter, ethics matters, character matters, procedures matter, leadership matters, and laws matter. If we carry that in our heart and we make sure we hold each other accountable for that, we will never have an issue in any of our cities, states, and country. Thank you.
Leroy Bell?
Leroy Bell, twenty-three zero eight, Maude Helen. Mayor, Commissioners. I was to speak on your public manager that you got for the public works, Mr. Mr., I forget his name, but anyway. On last meeting, we talked about the B map and the thing that you was doing preventative to keep, to keep the B map down so you can meet the DEP. And one of them was to, I think was to keep the drains clear. One was to do street sweeping. And that's where I want to start with that. Anybody that live in the city of Apopka, and I'm resident in here, raise your hand and tell me when the last time you seen a street sweeper. Well, that's one, two people. It hadn't been a street sweep over in Clear Lake, Clear Lake Estate, Maude Helen, nowhere, up in the city, right up in the city of Apopka. Well, maybe we need to start street sweeping then. You won't have to charge the people over in South Apopka. I'd like to take the last two minutes about the CRA. Yes, you gave some money to Lulamay Restaurant. You gave some money to the barber shop next to the Masonic Hall. Those are not the only two businesses over there. Sylvester and I went to Jim Hitt about this restaurant that he's talking about. The man came to him on Central. The man's name is Rufus Gardner. Everybody knows Fat Daddy. Fat Daddy was gonna get the restaurant, and he came to Jim Hitt to ask him, "What does it take to bring it up to par to receive some of this CRA money?" Jim Hitt never came down to talk to Rufus Gardner. He never got back with Clinton, with his name Fat Daddy, and I brought Rufus Gardner right here to talk to Mr. Hitt. We know that you don't want Orlando or the county to dictate what this money can be spent for. But the money is spent for everything other than what the CRA money is supposed to be spent for. It's a sludge fund for the city. And if you're gonna fix up one part of the city, fix up the other part of the city. I don't understand how everybody can say that the man is so great, or everybody like to brag on Doug Mason, how great he is. People reach out to the state. They have what they call report cards. Doug Mason have a felling F. He's doing nothing for the city of Apopka. He's just doing stuff to help this man fill his pocket with money. And these preachers in South Apopka, please, please stop enabling this man. Please!
Rod Olson?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. On my similar target, the aspect we should be pausing and doing what other communities have done is stop the development. We are, in Apopka, one of the fastest-growing cities in Orange County. Orange County is the fastest-growing county in the state. Apopka, because of its growth, bears the brunt of overcrowding in schools, hence all the trailers. 2006, Wolf Lake Campus opened with 46 portables. They're still there today. Yeah, they're supposed to remove a few. That won't last long with the development we're approving. The new school on, uh, Jason, Kelly Park School has 12 slots ready for trailers, and they're gonna be filled. We need to take, when you look at today's infrastructure, when you look at the sidewalks and streets, we've got a lot of work to do that needs to be done before the development continues. There's six action items today, and rather than my getting up at all six, I'll just highlight them quickly. Laurel Oaks on your agenda, 49 new students. Emerson Park, 38 new students. Ordens, 3032, nine new students. Ordens, 38, 72 students. It's 168. Ready for. Please, look at stopping or halting the development. We need to get our wheels, we need to get our legs under us. Thank you.
Albert McKemme?
Who's phone is that?
Your phone?
No, it's not mine.
It's over Susan's.
Nope.
I just might work in here.
Albert McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. In the last 18 months, I have not missed a city hall meeting. At this point, I'm beginning to feel that certain people in this administration also view the presence of the public as purely ceremonial. Four minutes to debate policy that planning, roads, and developers had hours to discuss. At a meeting 5th December, Mayor Nelson questioned me about impact fees for a project on Golden Gem Road. I found this rather strange as I was at the same meeting as Mayor Nelson regarding the Pioneer Agreement when Golden Gem Road was discussed. I was also at the same meeting as Mayor Nelson when we discussed impact fees being increased. I would have supposed Mayor Nelson to have been better informed than me, a simple member of the public. A year ago at City Hall meeting, I raised a question regarding development in Apopka, and the following information was given to me by Mr. Hitt. An average year saw 200 new homes. It would be an exceptional event if there were 600 new homes. One year ago, we were told a new comprehensive report would be presented early in 2023. We're now at the end of 2023. And as far as I'm aware, I haven't heard that the new comprehensive report, despite the fact it was going to cost $80,000, been available to the city. So it's impossible for me to confirm whether or not the information that we have been given that over the last year or so, 12,000 new developments are currently being planned in Apopka. If that information is anywhere near correct, that's an increase of 2,000% over the maximum that you were proposing would be an exceptional year. It appears to me that the terms and conditions as laid out in the Pioneer Agreement are not what was originally stated. And I would like to see questions raised about why we were told in the Pioneer Agreement workshop that things were going to be done one way, and it actually appears that's not the case. For example, we were led to believe that the developers would adopt part of Golden Gem Road. Now it appears the developers are only adopting the hard shoulders on either side of Golden Gem Road. Questions that I cannot bring to the commission and discuss in four minutes, because the videos take an hour at a time to watch. So how can I convince people that what we are bringing to you is relevant, but in four minutes, we can't prove anything? What I would ask is for the city to consider that we have more open meetings where members of the public can come in and they can discuss their thoughts on things and an environment where there's no confrontation, but we can discuss why we feel aggrieved. Thank you.
Gotta have somebody from Surtoma. Lorena, come on up. You gotta give us the, what's going on this weekend.
I'm not part of this.
What do we have? Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners and everyone in the gallery. I am here to invite you all to attend the 47th Annual City of Apopka Christmas Parade, which is this Saturday on Park Avenue, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And I want to thank the city for their continued support of this event. We rely on the Parks and Rec Department, the streets and grounds, and police and fire, and just everybody in the city comes out and helps. And it truly is a large community effort. So we appreciate all the support. We do have one of our honorees here, our Surtoma nominee, Mr. John Corin. He's gonna be parking cars and then hopping in a car and going down the parade route. And then he's been asked to join the FFA float. So, you know, you may see him three or four times throughout the parade. But our grand marshal this year is Roger Franklin Williams, who you all know. So please come out, support the parade, say hi to all your elected officials, and come out and have a good time. Should be a lot of fun. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else, anybody else from public wants to speak? Okay. We've got four items on the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of those items?
I don't need to pull it. I just want to make a quick reference. I just want to make sure that before we issue any money to any organizations, I want to make sure that their charitable status is current. Just to make sure that we're doing that behind the scenes, once we approve this.
Wait a minute, sir.
One of these, I don't think, has an active charitable status. It's a very easy one to catch up on. I don't, it doesn't need to be pointed out, but I just want to make sure that that's taken care of before we issue those checks. So, so moved.
Motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Which one were you referring to?
I don't want to point it out, but it's one of the donations we're making.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Nesta, second mic, Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Laurel Oaks Platte.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicant is requesting approval of the plat for Laurel Oaks subdivision, a 121-lot subdivision located north of Joey McGuckin Road, east of State Road 429, and west of Plymouth Sorrento Road. The plat is consistent with the approved lot sizes in the major development plan, the approved construction site plan, and is consistent with Florida Statute 177, which is plating. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval. And the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve the Laurel Oaks Platte.
Any questions for Bobby?
Maybe it's, it's on this property, and maybe it's irrelevant to the conversation, but I wanted to address it real quick. There were some pictures going around, around the Bay Ridge Cemetery to the south of here, having debris on that property. And I had asked staff to kind of look into that to see if it was due to the land clearing that's going on on this property currently. Have you all talked to the site developer to make sure that they're not doing that?
Defer to Mr. Hitt on that one.
Sound like Radley's got some information.
So for Laurel Oaks, there had been some discussion in the public and pictures distributed that had shown a lot of debris within the Bay Ridge Cemetery. It looked like newer debris. We wanted to make sure, first of all, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't this development that was contributing to that behavior. I don't know if you all looked into that, because I had sent the.
It is not, and Radley does have the background information for that.
Yeah, Radley Williams, Parks and Rec Director. Chuck, our city administrator, and I did take a visit to cemetery yesterday afternoon to see what might have been going on out there. From what we saw, it does not appear to be anything from the development. He did ask our building official to reach out to the developer just to verify that everything is in order. It does look like somebody did dump some debris, but it doesn't look like it's anything from the developer. Yeah, and the developer does have large burn piles on the property at the development that they're actively burning debris. So it doesn't look like that. It does look like some people have been to the cemetery to do some cleanup. There are some piles staged throughout the cemetery. That shows fresh cuts and fresh piling of debris. And there is one location that looked like somebody just pulled off the road, dumped it, and left.
Okay. And then I'll just, I'll wait till council reports to do the other part of that update.
Sure.
But I did want to use the opportunity here again, because, you know, I want to be respectful of Mr. Olson's comments that he made during public comment and use the same time to make an umbrella statement on this stuff. First and foremost, I want to make sure that the public realizes that for this piece of business specifically, we're approving a plat. The land use, the zoning, the contemplation of impact on capacity and so forth, that discussion has already happened through multiple public meetings on this particular topic. Similar to a lot of the other pieces of business here today, even though it's coming back before us for a new business contemplation, land use and zoning considerations have been made on these in a proper format. I will say this, because I have, I have a healthy communication with our school board member, Melissa Byrd, and I have many conversations with her to say, "If you ever feel like we're getting into a punitive state where they're not able to manage their budget or their logistics on how to safely school our children, that they have full right to come into these chambers to say, 'Pump the brakes, stop doing what you're doing. You're causing too much strain and burden on our school system.'" And that, quite frankly, has not happened. So the day-to-day operation of the schools, making sure that our students, three of my daughters are in the public school system here at Apopka High School, Wolf Lake Elementary, and Wolf Lake Middle. And my first and foremost concern is their safety and environment by which they can get proper education. I will advocate, and we've proven that before, that will advocate on behalf of this, on City of Apopka, to the schools if we feel like their capital budget is not appropriate for our area. But I have to give some level of confidence to school board member Byrd that she's doing her job appropriately, and she would raise up any red flags to this council. So I just want to make that statement before we get too far into the business here. So I'll get it.
Any other questions for Bobby?
I just had a quick question in reference to Joey McGuckin on the south. Is this developer doing improvements to that property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Is that on our plan in the near future to improve Joey McGuckin? Sorry, that's my fault. I should have asked.
It's about to go under design, and I expect it to be under construction within.
Speak up, Pam.
I'm sorry. I'm not usually a low talker. It's expected, well, I've got the scope to get it under design now. I expect design to take about a year, and then we should start construction probably within six to eight months of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for Laurel Oaks.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second mic, Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, residents at Emerson Park Platte.
Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicant is requesting approval of a plat for the residents at Emerson Park subdivisions, 101 or 103-lot townhome subdivision located at 1601 Austin Bay Boulevard. Platte is consistent with the approved lot sizes in the major development plan, construction site plan, and with Florida Statute 177, which is plating. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval. And the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve the Laurel Oaks Platte.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not look for motion to approve the plat for the residents at Emerson Park.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second mic, Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, special events permit application.
Good afternoon, Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here for final authorization for street closures for the foliage Surtoma Club of Apopka's annual Christmas parade. Street closures are requested in the special event application for the foliage Surtoma Club, Apopka's annual Christmas parade, the City of Apopka, and foliage Surtoma Club of Apopka entered into a five-year event co-production agreement, which has been attached to the staff report, free reference, in 2020. And this is for the operation and production of the annual Christmas parade. The event date requested for this year's parade is December 9th, which is this Saturday. Special event permit application was submitted for the event on November 1st. Event has been reviewed by staff, including Police Department and Fire Department, and is recommended for final approval. The DRC recommended unanimous approval for the special event permit application, along with the provided street closures at the November 8th, 2023 DRC meeting. Requested street closures include Park Avenue, Third Street, Second Street, Magnolia Street, Oak Street, Highland Avenue, and Votal Road on December night 2023, beginning at 8:00 a.m. and reopening at 1:00 p.m. Again, this item is being brought to City Council for final approval of the requested closures for the parade. And I know we already had the Surtoma Club speak, so.
Any questions for Radley? Yeah, so how many bands? Six? That's sick. We were seven, then we lose one? Yeah, that's awesome. All right, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the special event permit. the special event permit application for the Apopka Christmas parade.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second mic, Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, public hearing ordinance number 3030.
Ordinance number 3030. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka. Chapter 2 Administration, creating therein Article 4, Division 3, surplus real property for the purpose of establishing guidelines for the disposal of surplus real property lying within the City of Apopka limits, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Before you, we have the first reading for ordinance 3030, surplus real property disposal ordinance. On October 4th, Attorney Clifford Shepherd came before you to present a draft of the ordinance. Since that time, he's updated the information based on the comments that were provided. And as Susan just read, this is an ordinance that creates a procedure for disposal of surplus real property in the city outside the CRA. If you have any questions, Mr. Clifford is here.
All right. Any questions for Blanch or for Cliff on this ordinance?
I have a few questions. As expected, I would hope. I want to make sure that there's just, and we discussed this moving forward on this, that we know what provisions make sense in here. So I had, you know, I sent out those questions and all that. I don't know if the rest of the commission read those questions I sent out weeks ago. If not, I have copies for everyone.
Yeah.
As a refresher, and it also has the comments back from Attorney Shepherd's office of some answers that they had as well. Just for pop here, if needed.
I don't have them, but you can give them here.
Just so we refresh it for your own ears.
Good. It helps me not have to read them on the phone.
Exactly. You're welcome. So, and it references each section, subsection, all that, just the areas that I had concerns on all of it. And I just want to make sure that, number one, it makes sense, and then two, that the changes that I'm, that I'm sitting here bringing up may make sense. So again, it's, it's, there's a lot of questions here, a lot of just concerns of, one, that they just don't make sense. And I mean, we can go one by one, or you guys can take time to read it and then see what you guys feel in response to that.
I mean, my, my, my kind of order of priority as I'm looking at something like this is making sure first and foremost that the council has the authority by resolution to first declare the property is, is surplus or we're looking to do something else with it besides its current form. Secondarily, there is provisions in there talking about if it's going to like a 501(c). You know, you can kind of bypass certain things, but still subject to a full council approval. So those are my two kind of things that I was looking at most importantly. And then everything else underneath there is probably just all of our own kind of different priorities.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, any, any piece of city-owned business, or city-owned property, this council would have to collectively decide what's going to happen to it.
Well, so I guess that's, I'm just going to start at the top, and we'll go through each one there. And basically, it was to confirm that who, I guess, initiates, and I reference section, I guess, A3, unless we remove that. Who can initiate, I guess, that we want to surplus a property? Does it have to be a majority vote that that, I guess, how can that come in front of council to ensure that that is?
So, so the initiation of the process can be any one of you, but the decision on whether it goes forward is for all of you, just like you put an item on the agenda today. Same, same idea.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all there. So then it would go to a formal vote from there to surplus it. And then we were talking about fair market value. So, so in here, and this is where I felt the verbiage was a little contradictory, is the fact that it says, if the property is estimated to have a value that exceeds $250,000, the value is irrelevant, not irrelevant, but it's not.
I just plugged in numbers that were concerned. You can change the numbers.
It's who's dictating what that, how we would know what that value is in excess of. So it says, if the, if the property is estimated to have a value that exceeds.
Who's making the initial judgment is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay. That is an excellent question. It was my sense, although y'all may have a different sense, that there would be a good sense of rough enough approximation of the value to determine, like, like, you know, if we were looking at the police fire area and we decided we want to pull them in a new place and we want to get rid of those, that that's probably going to be in excess of $250, just based on location. I'm not an appraiser, but I stayed at the Holiday Inn Express last night.
Sure.
That's my guess. But my point is, this can all be done as an appraisal and solve the problem. I was trying to make it where you didn't have to get an appraisal for everything, but you can fix that if you want.
Well, no, and I'm, I'm fine with that. Again, it just goes back to who within the city dictates that value. I'm okay with that, that we don't, I don't want to spend unnecessary funds on appraisals on a $10,000.
My initial thought would be, you have a finance director. She would consult with community development or whoever has the most knowledge of property values. Heck, they may even go see a realtor. You could probably recommend some and say, okay, what do you think this is going to be? Roughly based on sales in the area, do you think it's more or less? But the bottom line is, there would be somebody who would have to make a threshold call of what category we fall into.
Well, I would like that, I guess, defined of who within the city, whether it's Community Development Department, Finance Director.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation, but again, this is just based on on the fly. It should fall to the Finance Director, whomever that is, and then after consultation with whomever he or she needs to consult with to get to a point of comfort of saying this is in category two versus category one versus category three.
I think, I just think it's important to dictate that. I understand that's the understanding, but should you or I not be here 10 years from now, five years from now?
Oh, I'm going to be here.
So am I. I just want to make sure that that's spelled out clearly. So it goes into kind of that process. That's fine. Got that. So good. And then I go on to, it's still under C here. It's still under C. So then we wouldn't need an appraisal for, during the declaration of surplus property appraisal, not required for, to go to a charity, a 501(c). And then you, there was references in here of using the property appraiser as a dictator of value. And although I understand that we use that for taxes.
It's way off.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's another point of reference for ballparking.
Okay.
Because essentially, once you get to the right ballpark, you're going to get an appraiser or you're not, depending on if it's less than $100,000.
Okay.
Unless y'all change the thresholds.
Okay. And then I guess I wanted to go, we talked about independent appraisal or appraiser, and it, and then it goes into versus one versus two. And I want to dictate the process of choosing the appraiser.
There's a number of different ways you can go about that. This is not specified here, but as an example. I don't know who we have, but I know the city has continuing contracts with engineering firms for certain things, and we can just pick on them as we choose. We could do the same thing by putting out an RFP for continuing contracts for appraisers and say, oh, we've got these three firms, and we're going to use two of them because this is requires two, or we're going to use this one because it only requires one. And so we could do that. You could also do it on a, okay, case-by-case basis. We need to appraisal of this property. Let's put it out to bid. So y'all can choose that if this is going to be a common thing. And I don't know that it is because there's a lot of times in cities, getting rid of property is a big deal.
Sure.
Regardless of the value. And so you might just want to wait and get the appraisers as the need arises. But if you want to put them on a continuing contract, you can do that, too.
Well, no, and that's not, my recommendation that I wrote down here is that it's appraisal management company, somebody that can, we contact them, and they, they're a third-party vendor that they pick, they do the choosing themselves so that there's no impropriety one way or the other of the valuation. So it's, we contact that, and it happens in real estate often so that there is no impropriety. So.
And who is it, did you say?
It's an AMC or an appraisal management company. So you contact them, and they have a pool of 100-plus appraisers in the area that can run with whatever it may be. I would suggest that. I like that better because, again, it takes away the impropriety. It's not my friend doing it. It's not.
The only reason for suggesting that that might not work is because of how, I don't know how much the services would cost. If the, because, you know, you have your own purchasing policy for how much you can spend on services beyond a certain threshold.
Sure.
So if it was under whatever those thresholds are, that would work. But if it's not, then you might not have that option.
Okay. I hear you there. We can look into that, and Ms. Sherman, we can discuss, I guess, what that looks like pragmatically. So it goes deeper into, on section D. So if the council, because we have the option, I guess, to waive the appraisal in pretty much any scenario, is that?
You can.
Okay. So what happens, I guess, in that sense? Because on D, it goes into that the bidder needs to be within X amount, if I'm not mistaken.
90%.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there it is. Yeah. So it needs to be within 90% of the appraised value. So what happens if I don't have an appraised value? Because we waived the, the need for an appraisal, I guess, how do we dictate who, who the accepted bid is? How do we judge the bids from there?
Okay, so the, the answer to that depends on what the goal is of the city, as an example. This is not for CRA property, but this is how CRA works. And essentially, it's a mirror of that situation. In a CRA, all of this doesn't apply to CRA, you get to decide fair value, not fair market value, based on the benefits the city's getting back from the transaction. And in my idea, this would be a similar thing. You got three people who are proposing X, Y, and Z, but one has a plan that more fits the city's vision. Instead of a dollar store, they're going to do a restaurant, as an example. You make the call.
Okay. Okay, understood. Thank you. Then it goes on to, under D, D1D, and B. It states, after the highest bid has been determined, I would like that language changed to the most preferred bid. Because, just because your highest doesn't mean your terms are actually the best for the city. So I want to make sure that it's not just based exclusively on the price, but on all the terms that are within that bid.
Okay. Again, depending on how you feel about it.
Yeah, and that's, it's, I'm speaking to you by real. I'm speaking to the council to see if that's, you know, all this is in agreement, and you guys are agreeable to that. And then there was closing, I guess, a closing timeline built in. So, so I guess we require somebody to close within 45 days of getting the successful bid notice, so to speak. And depending on the complexity of the property, it may require longer than 45 days. So I, I guess.
We can certainly build in, unless extensions are granted by the city.
Yeah.
That's an easy thing.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. Okay, and that we're pretty much covered. So then we, it's under F. If we go to a auction scenario, like, is it, can we set that process up ourselves? Do we have to set a reserve amount? Is there a timeline?
Well, now we're getting into auctions. There are absolute auctions, and there are reserve auctions. And absolute auctions means whatever the highest bidder is, is what gets it. But yes, in, in an area like this, reserves would be something I would have expected that you would say, you know, if you know at a minimum it's worth X, and you don't want to get anything less than X, then you'd set that as reserve.
Okay. And that would be, the council would dictate that X, or would that be a recommendation from Finance Director, Finance Director to us?
Finance Director to you. But again, at the end of the day, it's your call.
Sure.
If she says it should be at 100, and you say it should be at 200, it's 200.
Sure. But yeah, I think the recommendation, I think that's appropriate coming from our Finance Director. So it goes into, D2. It goes into stating, all metrics must be met to basically effectuate a sale if it's insufficient size, shape, things like that in this next clause here. So the private sale for a smaller, regularly-shaped parcel, so section 2, under D. So it's basically saying that property upon finding that, so the, the city may affect a private sale of a parcel of surplus property upon finding that due to the size, shape, location, and value of the parcel, the parcel is of use only to one or more adjacent property owners.
Right.
So what I'm saying is that it reads as if all of those have to be met versus just one. It's, it's an oddly-shaped property. It's so small.
No. And an example of it, sometimes, and I don't know how if it ends here, but it certainly happens in other places, so I would assume it happens relatively often here, is that you find out you have a sliver of land that's 12 inches by 10 feet you didn't even know you owned, and it really only makes sense to go to that property owner who's right next door, who thought they owned it the whole time.
Sure.
And you just say, yeah, we don't want it on the books. It's a liability for us. Take it.
Absolutely. No, I just want to make sure that it's not having to.
No.
Okay.
That's any one of those criteria.
Okay. That's what I'm making sure.
Basically, that's the purpose of it, so that you can solve these problems that sometimes presume.
Okay. I still, on that one, I also recommend that we do have a public notice process just so that, just in case somebody has a possibility of maximizing that value versus just the owner, that it opens it up to everybody, that it just, it creates a lot more openness and transparency throughout the process. And the next section, section 3, notice of intended, of intended action shall be sent to adjacent property owners by certified mail. Again, it's, it's just sedating that I think that this should go. If we, it's a small irregularly-shaped parcel, again, just publicly notice it, not saying send it to every person within the City of Apopka, but it should be publicly noticed just so that, again, all residents are aware that we're doing this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, any conveyance like that would come before council?
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Just through our own.
Again, unless y'all change this policy so it wasn't, it's, the bucket's going to stop right there.
Yeah, because as an example, we had something similar to this a couple of years back over by Sheiller High School. There was like a little sliver that we conveyed over to what they were doing. I mean, literally, it was probably less than a sidewalk. But it went through, I think, two hearings.
Well, so my point is, it went through two hearings after the agreement was already pretty much made. You're just finalizing it. I want it to be noticed before that should, that's a very specific scenario. But again, it just lets anybody else that says, well, I'm about to buy the property next door to that one, and that would help me in some capacity. So again, it's, I just want it as transparent as possible for all the residents. So, and then I, I guess the final part, it goes into like deed restrictions, similar to like, in reference to the transfer to a charitable or other government entities. I guess how enforceable are deed restrictions?
They're incredibly enforceable. If you don't believe it, ask any homeowners association who's got them. So they're very enforceable. It is the nature and the type of deed restriction that makes it unenforceable. An example everybody would know in this room is a racial restrictive covenant, not enforceable, things that are unconstitutional on their face, not enforceable. But, you know, you can't have grass that's over X number of feet, or the association's going to come cut it, definitely enforceable. You can't paint your house a certain color, definitely enforceable, and so on.
Okay. That's all the, that's my questions. I appreciate you guys' time letting me go through that. And counsel, obviously, I'd love to hear any feedback.
Any other questions?
No, like I said, I think the policy has the right kind of guidelines and areas of focus, and that should be our, our burden of proof as we contemplate disposal or conveyance of property on the different parties, adhere to the policy. But there's enough discretionary language in there that we, as a council, ultimately can say, hey, we want to either deviate from a prescriptive, you know, appraisal process, but again, the body itself has to, has to do that. But I think there's enough in, in this policy for us to, to have that conversation.
And that was the goal, because heretofore, we've had no policy. So this is better than nothing.
Well, I think it's really key, too, and that's why I'm passionate about this one, is that we've recently undersold a few parcels, not knowing any better or not, but the developers did, and, and we've lost millions. So it's making sure that we're doing it right for the residents and making sure their money is as strong as possible in this transactions that we're doing.
So you got quite a few changes. Do you want to just bring this?
So you got quite a few changes. Do you want to just bring this back, next council meeting with those changes that you're asking?
Trust me, that's, these changes are nothing. I can do those in like ten minutes. It's not a big deal. I can bring them back for the second reading. Now, if you want more time to consider them, that's no problem.
Okay, we just do it the second reading? Okay.
It's no problem.
Okay. All right, so we will just have just additional changes that we'll bring back at the second reading then, so look for motion.
Do we need public coming on this?
Yeah. Anybody from the public wants to speak on this one?
Leroy Bell, twenty-three, zero-eight, Mott Helen. Also, this is the proposal of ordinance of the land disposal. We just had a few months back, you remember, up on Sixth Street, about the parking lot, and they wanted to put in affordable houses? And it was this big discrepancy between this South Apopka Municipal Storylines and Rod Love, the mayor buddy, came in, already had, did a proposal, had everything drawn up, and had talked with Jim Hitt about it, about, they'd brought their full plans and everything to the council, and everything for the city to surplus the land to them. I don't think that's fair. I think it should be going into this ordinance, that it should be some standard operating procedure, that it shouldn't be no fraternization in this. It need to be taken out. What he did, what they did, or tried to do, it need to, it don't, the city need to do something to ensure. If you're gonna surplus land, it should be surplus equally, and everyone should be able to have a fair chance at this property, other than the mayor trying to get money into his friend's pockets. I hope you agree with that.
That, that particular parcel was never approved?
I, I, I. I didn't say it was approved. And please, don't, don't take it as I said it was approved. I was saying the process that were leading up to it. I think what happened was, if I remember correctly, I think it was Commissioner Nestor that brought this up because of the way that it's transpired. Now, if you're gonna, like you said, put it out to the public, let the public get a chance to look over, let the public, everybody to come in, let them get a shot at it, other than going directly to Jim Hitt, giving him a proposal, saying, this is what we're gonna do. This is what we want the land for. We want the land for six or seven affordable houses, and it be up under the, up under control of this mental storyline, or Rod Love, or whoever, up under the auspices, saying that this is gonna be affordable houses. When you had a project down here was affordable houses that everybody was against, but yet it still, they have went through all the flammalities. They, they didn't even have permits. They hadn't drawn the permit, but they said, this is what we're gonna do with the land. And they came to ask the mayor to surplus this to them. So how is that fair to anybody else? It wouldn't be fair to anybody else if I had came in and asked for the land, from the surplus to me. I'm just saying fundamental fairness, you know, that's just like putting stuff in people, like y'all getting stuff shelved in your mailboxes. You remember I just asked a question a few minutes ago? Said, how many people got street sweepers? Raise your hand. Mr. Claude raised his hand. So what I'm gonna do from now, I'm gonna move my street over there where he getting his street swept at. What I'm saying is this, everybody needs to have fundamental fairness in this. And, and it seemed to me, if you look at number five, y'all pull that. That's his buddy, Rod Love. And it's all about putting money in this man's pocket. Come on, be fair to everybody. Everybody, they the only one pay taxes in Apopka.
Anybody else want to speak?
Sylvester Hall. Commissioner Nestor, he put it kind of nicely. But see, these are some of the things after we sit here and we go through meeting after meetings, these are some of the things that's very frustrating to myself and the public. The property on, I think it's San Piper and Rock Springs Road, we sold that for peanuts, and then they turned around and sold it for over a million dollars. Now, I would have a problem with my kid going out and selling her bicycle and not knowing the value of it. How can we say we trust our leaders, and we can sell property like that without doing our due diligence? And then when it happened, we just normalize it, because it's abnormal, but we just normalize it. So what is the truth? We don't have a standard SOP for doing that process. So who cares? And then what is the accountability, and what is the consequences for doing that? These are things that you all supposed to be protecting us over. It's like when I drop my kids off to the school, I know the principal and the staff is gonna do what they supposed to do to take care of them when I come to pick them up. As our leaders of this community, when we go to work and come back home, we want to know that the community is safe. And you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing to watch over us, to make sure the city grow and prosper for everyone. And that's a problem. And we can't keep looking the other way and pretending these things are not happening, and then just sugarcoat it. We need to have a SOP so it is flawless, so you can weed out corruption on any level. And if we're not doing that, we're just fooling ourselves. Because when you're gone, the next person's gonna be able to come in and do the same thing. And that's what's wrong with our politicians and our leaders today. We are some of the dumb asses residents that I ever seen, because we pay our money for your services. You guys are overseeing the service that we pay our tax dollars for. And it's about time the citizens start demanding the same type of five-star that every other five-star corporation asks for their company. We pay our taxpayers dollars. We want to make sure we get great service, and that's your guys' responsibility and young lady's responsibility to make sure that's happening. And if that is not happening, we're failing the people. But people are starting to wake up. And I'm, I'm humble in my soul that change is coming. That's why I try to tell you, everyday people, when you see something that is wrong, stand up and say that is wrong. Commissioners, when you see something is wrong, stand up and say it's wrong. Mayor, when you see something is wrong, correct it. That's your job as the mayor. That's your job right now, because we are operated under a strong mayor. And if I look at it for what it is, that could be heaven, or it could be hell. That could be heaven, or it could be hell for the citizens of any county. So I ask each one of you to do what you have sworn, what you sworn to do. Serve and protect the citizen of the city of Apopka. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Okay, close the public hearing, look for motion. I guess we'll prove it with the error or the changes that.
With the changes. And I will make sure that I got them all. I assume, based on what I heard or didn't hear, that the changes he's requested, y'all are on board with. I will make those changes. I will run it by him to make sure I didn't miss any, and then we will distribute it to everybody, because we know to do that. And then you'll have it in time for the meeting.
One last bit.
Can I just, I just want to kind of make one comment.
Sure.
The last time that one of the commissioners had sent you questions.
Right.
And you responded, you had the courtesy of sending it to all of us.
Right.
Why wasn't this sent to us?
I, I don't remember the timing, because this, as I recall, it was back in September, and I'm not sure which came first, because at some point, it was made clear to me, to make sure that if I was responding to one, I should respond to all.
Right.
But I think this might have been before that happened.
So it, well, it was in early October, and I don't know who was all BCC'd on it, but it was my understanding that it was all BCC'd to all of us. But it was back in October, so it wasn't like last week.
No, it's, it's been a while, and so I'm not sure. And I actually did think that I had responded and given on this one to everybody, but I'd have to go actually pull the email to be sure.
It's on October fourth. It was, it was a while ago.
Okay. But, but yeah, that's, I don't do, not do that. Not anymore, I learned.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, the last, the last part, because I kind of think it goes to the spirit of maybe some of the stuff that was discussed just recently. So again, the ordinance is prescriptive in the sense of, hey, as a body, do we want to contemplate disposal of a property? Great, that box is checked. And there's provisions in there. How much is the property valued at? If it's above a certain mark, you do certain things. If it's below a certain mark, you don't have to do those certain things. Get it? The, the one kind of, if this was land development code, it's like the PD of the options. It's the transfer to charitable or other governmental entities, because it basically says, within the reasonable exercise of its discretion and having consideration for the best interest of the city, the value and condition of the property, and the probability of such property being desired by a private party, the city council may sell, transfer, lease, or otherwise convey the surplus property to a private nonprofit agency or to another government entity.
Right.
No advertisement is required, and such a sale or donation shall be under the terms and conditions as city council deems appropriate. Again, with reasonable exercise of its discretion, it's a, you know, like I said before, our exercise of discretion should be the spirit of the prescriptive nature that we said first. And if we're going to this level, there should be a very good reason. But again, that's very subjective. My only question is, on the no advertisement piece of that, what is, what is the driver of that? And would that be out of bounds for us to even contemplate that?
No, it, first of all, it's not out of bounds, and the objective behind it is, if you're already going to give a piece of land to a charitable organization, the thought was that you would want to minimize the expenses associated with that, since you're already giving away the land, and advertising is an expense. And if the decision has been made, essentially based on what's in the best interest of the community, or whatever your standards are to apply, that this is a donation that the city should make, then it becomes less essential for it to be an advertised process, in that you've, this is an organization you've decided to do this with. And I bring it up in, because, although I don't remember who was suggesting what, but I do remember, early on, people were asking about, on the commission, hey, I want to see a contract where we're providing a long-term lease to this organization, or we're providing a piece of property to that organization. And I suppose that's where the genesis of this ordinance came from, which is, we don't have a procedure for that. And so the thought process was, okay, I don't know who these organizations are, how good they are, and whether all of you agree that it's a good idea, but if you did agree that this is what you wanted to do with the organization, it would be the easiest way to get to the means and the least expensive. But that said, there's not a legal reason, and in fact, you may have a lot of good other reasons, political and otherwise, just transparency, that you say, no, even if we're giving it away, we want to advertise it, we want to go through the whole, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I want to shy away from calling it politically driven, but the fact of the matter is this, right? And I'm sure every single one of us up here has been approached by some nonprofit or great intended organization within our community to say, hey, you've got this city asset over here, we would be really interested in using that. Great. We all each have five individual conversations with that. We all think, okay, we've bought into it, or they've bought into it. And all of a sudden, a kind of fully baked proposal comes to this lectern, whereas four other of us may not have been privy to that conversation whatsoever.
Right.
So it gets to a point where there's a sense of maturity, and the business case could be proven. They're at the lectern in a hearing, but yet, the rest of the community, there may be two or three other charitable organizations that were kind of looking for the same thing or opportunity. They just didn't know that the city had an appetite of doing that with a piece of property. So I think between this first reading and the second reading, we should have some sort of provision in there for a cooling off period or a contemplation period to say, okay, a viable nonprofit or charitable organization has put forth their, their business case, we've looked at it, and we've said, oh, that, that seems reasonable. But that may trigger other like-minded organizations within the community to say, hey, I would have had an equal value to, to the city to use the same piece of property. So I don't want to get into a place where we feel like there has been favoritism or preferential treatment.
I completely get it. That's an easy add. And it actually, if you will permit me, gives me the opportunity to comment a little bit in response to what the public provided. Because you know all, you all know, that you get approached, as you mentioned, maybe not on the regular, but certainly people will come to you in the community and say, hey, we would like this donation, or we would like to be able to use this facility, or we would like to have this piece of property, or whatever. And so the idea that that can't happen, or should somehow be prohibited, is not, A, realistic and not even legal. You're supposed to be the, able to be the representatives of the folks who are supposed to be able to come and ask you these things. And there's nothing wrong with the ask. If, if my streets aren't getting swept, I need to ask somebody, hey, what do I got to do to get my street swept? If I want a piece of property, you can say no, but that doesn't mean, as a citizen, I don't have the opportunity to ask. So there's nothing wrong with the ask. That's why this procedure, which was suggested, a standard operating procedure, I think that's a good term for this, is, okay, now we've got an ask. It is a fully, to your point, baked ask, but there may be others that are better baked, or may have better ingredients.
Right.
All of that makes sense, but that's the real answer. There's nothing inherently unfair about an organization or an individual saying, well, you don't know if you don't ask, so I'm gonna ask. And then it's what you do with it after that that matters.
And then, and I just want to be clear, the advertising, so people that are watching this who are here in the room, the no advertisement claim there is no advertising that the property is kind of for sale, so to speak. The advertisement, in the sense of advertising public hearings on its formal disposition, would certainly be advertised.
Sure, that's because it's like any other meeting, absolutely.
Anything else? Cliff, you got your work cut out for you, but you've got a month to do it in, so.
I got you, no problem.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
With the changes that we've discussed and incorporated.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-two.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-two. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southeast, southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Dalman Drive, owned by SNP Properties LLC, comprising five acres, more or less, providing per securability and for an effective date.
Bobby Howell, planning manager. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Dalman Drive, and it's approximately five acres in size. This property was annexed into the city on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant's requesting a future land use amendment from county rural settlement to city mixed use. Property is located within the one-mile radius of the State Road four twenty-nine Kelly Park Interchange. The applicant's requesting the approval of the small-scale future land use amendment to develop the property in accordance with the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. Their request to sign a future land use designation of mixed use is compatible with designations assigned to abutting properties to the west, which are within the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. Orange County Public Schools has issued a capacity determination letter stating capacity is available at Kelly Park Elementary and Middle Schools, but is deficient by zero-point-one-three-three students at Apopka High School. The applicant will be required to apply for concurrence review and, if necessary, enter into currency mitigation agreement. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading, ordinance number thirty thirty-two, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on January third, twenty twenty-four. The staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public want to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3032, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3034.
Ordinance number 3034. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to mixed use for certain real property located at 1700 West Keene Road, owned by M.L. Carter Services, Inc., trustee of the Carter Keene Road Land Trust, comprising 18.8 acres more or less, providing for separability conflicts and an effective date.
Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, the applicant's requesting a continuance to January 3rd, 2024.
Okay. All right, anybody from, any questions for Bobby before we, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to...
Continue.
Continue to January 3rd, 2024, ordinance number 3032.
So...
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3034.
It's without background.
Ordinance number 3035. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida...
Do you know what? Can we just wait till he returns?
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I think it's best because he is present.
Let's just, we're just going to continue this one as well, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, let's just, we're going to continue.
Yes.
So go ahead and read it.
Okay. Ordinance number 3035. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from O Office to MU ESGT, Mixed Use Eastshore Gateway, for certain real property located at 1700 West Keene Road, owned by M.L. Carter Services, Inc., trustee of the Carter Keene Loan Land Trust, comprising 18.8 acres more or less, providing for separability conflicts and an effective date.
The applicant's requesting a continuance to January 3rd, 2024.
Any questions for Bobby?
Mm-mm.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close, look for motion to continue ordinance number 3035 to the January 3rd, 2024 commission meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3038.
Ordinance number 3038. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from CC, Community Commercial District, and T, Transitional District, to PD, Plan Development District, for certain real property generally located west of Plymouth Sorento Road, north of US 441, and east of State Road 429, comprising 13.04 acres more or less, and owned by Gary D Charlton Living Trust, Peggy G Charlton Living Trust, half interest, and Gary D Charlton Living Trust, half interest, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, separability conflicts, and an effective date.
Thanks, Mayor. Jim Heck, Community Development Director, this is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance 3038 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on January 3rd, 2024. This is for the Plymouth Sorento Apartments, PD zoning, rezoning, and a master plan. The subject properties are located at 750 and 922 Plymouth Sorento Road, east of State Road 429, north of US 441, and west of Plymouth Sorento Road, site is approximately 13.04 acres in size. Plymouth Sorento Apartments, PD, or which is the Plan Development, is a consolidation of two parcels totaling approximately 13.04 acres. The properties have current zoning designations of T, which is Transitional, and CC, which is Community Commercial, and have a future land use designation of HDR 25, which is the High Density Residential permitting up to 25 dwellings per acre. Future land use designation was adopted based on the ongoing development trends and market demands for multifamily development. The PD proposes to construct 242 multifamily units with a density of 18.55 dwelling units per acre. This proposed multifamily development serves as a transition from the commercially intensive uses along US 441 and adjacent to the State Road 429 to the existing single-family uses east of Plymouth Sorento Road. The proposed ingress and egress for the project are located on Plymouth Sorento Road and on the southwest portion of the proposed development at the intersection of Orange Avenue and US 441. The applicant has been coordinating with Florida Department of Transportation and Central Florida Expressway Authority in referencing the designing for the access onto US, on the, excuse me, Orange Avenue and US 441 intersection. Please note that the FDOT does not issue reviews with permit submittal, which is only done by the applicant at the construction site plan time, time period. We haven't gotten to the major development plan yet, this is just the rezoning for that. The applicant also proposes enhanced landscaping, building buffer, and approximately 100 feet of a decorative fence from Plymouth Sorento Road. The dedication of the 30-foot road right-of-way on the Plymouth, to the public is also provided along the project frontage on Plymouth Sorento Road. The amenity package includes pool, deck, clubroom, recreational lawn, fitness center, pet spa, and outdoor grills in the centralized open space amenity area. Additional amenities of a dog park, as well as a six-foot wide recreation trail around the stormwater pond on the north, with benches and other amenity equipment is to be provided. The DRC recommends approval. At its meeting on November 14th, 2023, the Planning Commission, on a 3-2 vote, recommended approval of the future land use amendment. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance 20, excuse me, 3038, hold it over for second reading and adoption on January 3rd, 2024. Staff and applicant are available for questions. And the applicant does have a presentation.
Questions for Jim?
I just have one, and it's in reference to, and I just saw it now, the school concurrency or capacity letter, it just expired on April 30th. What's that process? Does that slow down this process, or?
No, they'll be getting another one for the major development plan portion.
And that's what, okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Jim or the applicant?
Nothing, I mean, you just explained it, nothing has changed with the product.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, still major setbacks to the front and...
The sticking point that I have gotten emails, and I'm sure we all have, has to do with that 441 to Orange Avenue with FDOT, but you're saying that at a future date that will be addressed.
Correct.
That at this stage, they do not issue apartment or permission or whatever.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, when this goes before Planning Commission and City Council for the major development plan, the plan does show that. When, if there's any issues regarding that, when we get to the construction site plan portion, if there's any issues or any changes, we will bring that back to Planning Commission and City Council for any of those changes because that does distribute the traffic quite a bit.
So, yeah, so that, and we do get emails on the topic, so I'll just enter in the record, Ms. Butcher, on Plymouth Sorento there, sent an email of opposition on this particular project, but points that were made, and I don't know if the applicant's going to address, but I think it should be really staff-led, is, you know, from a noticing perspective, all of the kind of order of operation of this thing, there's evidence and proof that all necessary noticing, all the way from start to where we're currently at right now, has fully adhered to our land development code. I, I'm not saying that as a statement, I'm just, I want to elicit staff to say, yes, that has happened, and you all have documentation to prove as such.
I brought it, yes.
Okay.
Yep, we've done, all the mailers have been put out, the posting of the property has been done a couple different times. At one point, we went out to verify, and the original notice was, that was posted in front of the sign, was tossed in the bushes, so we did put a new one after that.
Yeah, and I think, and just for the general statement of it, I think people are used to, hey, we've got a first reading, one meeting, the very next meeting, we'll look at a second reading, and so on and so forth. This case is a little bit different because there's kind of two things, two or three things at play with this particular property, one of which is, with the land use change that was made, it had to be transmitted to the state, so the first reading and the second reading were months apart.
Months apart, yes, sir.
And so if you're looking at our agendas and looking for successive agendas that say, first reading, second reading, that's where things can fall apart. Secondarily, there was another land development code provision that was exercised by this particular development that certain parts of our city years ago had been granted a designation to go up to 25 dwelling units per acre. The applicant on this one, and that, that whole legislation went through a whole different set of noticing requirements, different than this one specifically. This one specifically was only to piggyback off of that 25 dwelling units per acre. So basically, for the benefit of the public, when that 25 dwelling unit per acre geographic map was approved, it just approved those geographic areas. The applicants, on a case-by-case basis, would have to come to this council, prove that increasing it to that 25 dwelling unit per acre density was something that we wanted to explore, and it's approved on a case-by-case basis, similar to this property. The applicants here have asked for that designation, which was approved previously, it's memorialized within this PD, as well as the fact that they're not coming anywhere close to that 25 maximum. I think when all is said and done, it's maybe in the 18, 19...
18.55, it's closer to the 15 than the original 25.
So almost 100 dwelling units on this particular project, that's underneath what conceivably could have been their max, so, but again, stated, all, and I don't want to steal the thunder of the applicant, but all of this stuff is memorialized within the developer's agreement that we're contemplating today.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim or the applicant? If not...
I'll have one for the, a couple for the applicant, but let them do their presentation and follow up there.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners, Madam Clerk, my name is Jonathan Hules, I'm with the Lowndes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando. Just first, wanted to thank Jim and the rest of his staff, been working on this project for good, all of this year, actually, had our community meeting in January, and our applications were submitted in the last part of last year. So this is the third public hearing by which this project has been presented to you, it's also been before Planning Commission twice, and we did have that community meeting. So this is the first reading, and the second reading is scheduled for January 3rd. Many of you have seen this presentation because it's very similar to what I had presented at the front end of this process in the spring of this year, when it was the transmittal, I'm sorry, the transmittal hearing for the comp plan amendment. I can present, or I could just filter questions and use the presentation to answer them if I can. Why don't I filter questions, Commissioner Nesta?
Sure, yeah, and it's really just one, I have a couple comments, so I just want to confirm, you guys did confirm this already at Planning Commission, I just want it confirmed at this meeting as well, that the striping for the turn lanes, it's striping and it's not raised.
Correct.
Okay.
The, and of course, this is the PD master plan.
Yes.
So the real details, we build upon the master plan as we go farther into development process, so the major development plan is about a 40% engineering planning set, and that will be, need to be consistent with what's shown here and provide greater detail. We're not proposing any raised type of median or anything but painted stripes at this point.
Okay, and this, what's provided, the pictures that are provided are conceptual renderings, I mean, things can change a little bit, and, and what I want to say too, is I guess it also came up, accessible parking. I know, Mr. Heck, you had referenced that, some of it's not exactly where you want to be, so those could move around as well a little bit, if I'm not mistaken, at the Planning Commission, you had referenced that.
Yes, I had noticed that we didn't have accessible parking spaces directly in front of the main entrance, so that, that's always a comment that a couple of our Planning Commission members noticed, and I said it beforehand.
Yeah, I just want to, again, it's stated there, I want to make sure it's stated here as well, that those will be adjusted, and this is just conceptual, this isn't locking this exact plan in right now. It's kind of, it's the macro of it.
Correct.
So those are my two questions, I mean, the, the other one is basically, it goes into, this project is surrounded by a lot of residential, things like that, I don't think that it completely adheres to the surrounding area, but at the same time, we have the Live Local Act that is breathing down our necks on, on different capacities, and I do think that this is the best-case scenario for what we have, and I know during Planning Commission as well, that there was talks that it was threatening from the developer, things like that, and I don't think that's what, I didn't interpret as such, it was more so, this is coming from the state legislator, it's really a threat from them that all of these parcels can easily be built on without any oversight from this commission, from Planning Commission, and this is the best-case scenario for what we have in the sense that we have the 30-foot right-of-way dedication that you guys don't have to be doing, the enhanced landscaping buffer, that second entrance, so there's a lot at play here that, although it's not my most preferred project here, it's still, you guys are working with us, and I appreciate that, so I just wanted to put that on the record, and other than that, no more questions.
Any other questions for Jonathan?
No, I mean, I, I echo that sentiment because I've heard that too, that the, that the applicant somehow was using that as leverage, which, if we go back, I'm pretty sure we self-identified the impacts of the Live Local Act and what it could be on this particular piece of property, so I just want to make sure that that's...
And my only comment to that is that we actually started this project before Live Local Act was even a known quantity, was introduced as a bill in the last legislature, it became effective, it was approved by legislature and became effective in July, so we've been at this for many, many months before that, and this is not a Live Local Act project. And so I think the comparison is fair because it is out there, and this property does have a commercial zoning designation, and it would qualify for Live Local, but this is not a Live Local Act project, as it's been negotiated with staff and this board here at this dais of what this project looks like today, with the reduced unit count, with the two access points, with the clustering of the buildings to the interior of the site that allows for 100 foot, 100-foot setbacks of the buildings with the dedication of the right-of-way, so very different in form.
Okay, any other questions for applicant?
No, just for disclosure, I mean, I met with the applicant last week, I think it was.
I think we met.
Yeah, I mean, more specifically, it was really centered around making sure that all of the noticing and all of that stuff had transpired, which I'm getting affirmative answers from both staff as well as the applicant, that all of those were satisfied to our land development code standards.
That's correct.
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3038 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3041.
Ordinance number 3041. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting the petition of Double B Development LLC, establishing and naming the Golden Gem Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, describing the external boundaries, the functions, and the powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the district board of supervisors, providing a separability clause, and providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Ordinance number 3041 seeks to establish the Golden Gem Community Development District for the Wild Oaks Project. The property is located southeast corner of Kelly Park Road and east of Golden Gem Road, is general vicinity, as you can see it on the map on the screen. The petition for the CDD has been filed pursuant to the Uniform Community Development District Act of 1980, which is in Chapter 190 of Florida statutes. The CDD will be comprised of a total of 199.869 acres, and as I stated previously, is located at the Wild Oaks Development. The DRC recommend approval of the petitioner's request to establish the Golden Gem CDD, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve first reading, ordinance number 3041, hold over for second reading and adoption on January 3rd, 2024. The petitioner is available for questions if you have any. The petitioner is available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Bobby?
I have one quick question. Is this our first CDD within the city limits?
No, sir, we have two others.
Where are they at?
One is the Ridge, and the other is Kelly Park CDD, which is coming up next for contraction.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3041 at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3042.
Ordinance number 3042. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the boundaries of the Kelly Park Community Development District, established pursuant to ordinance 2924, providing a severability clause, addressing conflicts, and providing an effective date.
For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. This is an amendment to one of our existing CDDs, the Kelly Park CDD. It's a contraction by 2.328 acres. The original CDD total was 213.409 acres, and it was approved via ordinance number 2924. The amendment is being requested pursuant to the Uniform Community Development District Act of 1980, which is enshrined in Chapter 190 of Florida statutes. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. Recommended motion this afternoon is to approve first reading of ordinance number 3042, hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 3rd, 2024. Myself and the petitioner are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3042 at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2023-04.
Resolution 2023-04. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment, and extending the boundaries of the West Kelly Park Street Lighting District to include properties lying within the crossroads of Kelly Park in the City of Apopka, to fund that street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3631, Part III, Part A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
This is Cliff Shepard, presenting for Mr. Vavrick, who cannot be with us today. He explained to me in advance that the city has a number of municipal special benefit units for street lighting, and for the next three resolutions for which I'll be standing at the podium, the request is to expand the district boundaries for these units to include newer development, so that in the eventuality, most likely likelihood, that additional street lighting will be required, that it would be subject to the same special assessment procedure that you have in place. I will answer the questions that I can, based on my understanding of MSBUs and street lighting, but that's as far as I can go.
Any questions for Cliff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we look for a motion to.
I think.
You have one to speak.
Okay.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I see the resolution is for extending the West Kelly Park Street Lighting District to include crossroads at Kelly Park and Wild Oaks Development. It really doesn't tell me exactly where the street lighting will be, because if my recollection serves me correctly, Wild Oaks Development extends down Golden Gem Road. I see no mention of Golden Gem Road there, but Wild Oaks does stem down about 30% of, of Golden Gem Road. I'm just looking to see if we're going to get any street lighting in Golden Gem.
My understanding of this proposal is that it is to extend it so that the, these internal roads within these developments would be covered. So I don't think it includes anything on Golden Gem itself.
Right, it's internal roads, yes, correct. Okay, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution 2023-04.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2023-33.
Resolution 2023-33. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment, renaming the Magnolia Terrace Street Lighting District, and extending its boundaries to include properties lying within the Bronson Ridge Development in the City of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Part III, Part A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Once again, I'm Cliff Shepard, appearing for Mr. Vavrick today. Same rationale, this is to extend the district boundaries to include new development, so that in the eventuality, even likelihood, that street lighting will be included there, so will the special benefit unit be extended, and the assessment ability to collect the cost of those through that MSBU.
Any questions for Cliff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-33.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2023-34.
Resolution 2023-34. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to extend the East Kelly Park Street Lighting District territorial limits to include the Wingspan Development, and to use the uniform ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the East Kelly Park Street Lighting District, to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing for, that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Part III, Part A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Again, Cliff Shepard, presenting for Mr. Vavrick. Same thing I said twice before, only applied to this Kelly Park Street Lighting District.
Okay, any questions for Cliff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution 2023-34.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2023-37.
Resolution 2023-37. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, approving the extension of the Apopka Community Redevelopment Agency's termination date, modifying the Apopka Community Development Plan's termination date, providing for conflicts, and providing for severability and an effective date.
Down to my level. Jim Hitt, Community Development Director and CRA Director. This is basically similar to what we had reviewed at the CRA meeting previously. This is for approval of Resolution 2023-37, which is a request to extend for an additional three years to Orange County, which their meeting is actually being held next week, Tuesday, at 9:00 in the morning. As I mentioned before, the original CRA was adopted back in June 28th, 1993, through Resolution Number 93-16, which created the CRA and also adopted the Community Redevelopment Plan. Because Orange County is a charter county, they are author, they are also authorized, the CRA via Resolutions 93-M-38, 93-M-39, and 95-M-25, as required by Florida statutes 163410. On September 26th, 1995, the City of Apopka, the CRA in Orange County also executed in inter-local agreement, providing for certain matters with respect to the operations of the CRA. On June 21st, 2017, the city adopted Resolution 2017-10, which was, which approved different modifications to the CRA redevelopment plan. And on August 29th, 2017, Orange County adopted Resolution 2017-M-29, approving the CRA's modifications to the plan. Following this meeting, as I mentioned, the City Council is scheduled to, I'm sorry, this is a different part. Orange County Board of County Commissioners, as I mentioned, next week, Tuesday, they will be hearing the approval for, for the, the extender, extending the CRA plan, and also the inter-local agreement. As I mentioned at the CRA meeting, of course, this is a different meeting, there are three different requirements that the, Orange County is requesting, or requiring, I have to rephrase that, requiring us. One is that the Orange County government shall be recognized alongside the city for any capital improvement projects and other major, major accomplishments using tax increment funds, which is the tax, also known as TIF. As I also mentioned, these projects are usually all designed and implemented by the city itself, but we will recognize them for their financial contribution. Beginning with the calendar year 2024, within 90 days of the close of the city's fiscal year, in other words, this will be October 31st, 2024, the city shall provide an annual update to the board regarding the CRA activities and the use of the tax increment funding. Excuse me. And the last portion is the initial extension of the sunset date shall be January 1st, 2027. And again, this is the initial sunset. With the ability to extend to January 1st, 2034, the extended sunset provided that the city send a written notice to the request, to the extent that the CRA beyond the initial sunset to the deputy county administrator at least 120 days prior to the December 1st, 2026 timeline. And shall include in such request a list of all the CRA planned projects. In other words, what our budget is going to be looking at, the completion status and the associated TIF revenues spent for each project since October 1st, 2023, calculated as a mean annual expenditure divided by annual revenues. So at this stage, we are requesting approval of Resolution 2023-0-37 for the extension of the three-year contract.
Well, I mean, I really enjoyed what Member Becker said during the CRA. How do we ensure that that same sentiment of emotion gets, does it ride if we approve based off of CRA actions? I don't have to make that same motion when it gets to that point, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good comments from Member Becker.
All right, any other questions for Jim? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution 2023-37.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2023-40.
Resolution 2023-40.
Inter-local agreement, too. Approval of the inter-local agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. So we need inter-local agreement?
Yes. There's no heading for that, that's just a recommend approval for that.
So any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not look for a motion to approve Resolution.
It's just the inter-local.
Inter-local agreement, I'm sorry, inter-local agreement.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, before we go on, I somehow inadvertently left out number four and five of the business items. Sorry, apologize for that, so I need to go back to those.
Four and five.
I thought those were removed.
Those were removed.
Were removed, okay.
They were removed.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right.
So just to confirm while we're, I was going to reference that, is the printed agenda that's been provided is inaccurate to the one that's most updated online, which has been updated a few times.
Yeah, and to that end, I mean, just procedurally, I know in the past, the agenda's published on Fridays, and if there's additions, we usually get notification about the additions. Conversely, I would hope that we can get some updates, because if we've spent time reviewing items that aren't going to be on the agenda, it's nice to know that. So if staff can afford us that luxury of, if there's, if there's omissions, if they can do that as well.
All right. Susan.
Okay. Resolution 2023-40. A resolution of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance number 873, amending the investment portfolio policy of the City of Apopka to comply with Section 218.415 Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. On October 18th, 2023, the city's investment advisors, Morgan Stanley, presented a proposed change and revisions to the city's investment policy for council review and consideration. The presentation included the following topics: an overview of the policy, the policy framework, investment program regarding the current holdings and samples, investment program for long-term goal, and the investment program implementation. Resolution number 2023-40 includes the comments and recommended provisions proposed by council and is ready for final adoption. So the recommended motion is adoption of Resolution 2023-40, amending ordinance number 873, amending and restating the investment portfolio policy of the City of Apopka.
Any questions for Blanche on this one?
Is this coming back for a second reading?
No.
No, this is a resolution.
So anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Clerk. My name is Amanda Allen. I am Assistant Branch Manager at the Seacoast Bank, located here in Apopka at 345 East Main Street. I am here on behalf of not only Seacoast, but Francis Porta Latin. She would have loved to have been here today, however, she did have a family emergency with her children. I do also have a memo from the Apopka Chamber of Commerce. Is it okay that I do give this to you?
Sure. You got an extra one for the court? Okay, great, thank you. Can I ask you, when was this dated? There's no date on it.
This was given to us today. I'm sorry that this is not dated, this was presented to us today from the Apopka Chamber. Dear Apopka City Commissioners, on behalf of the Chamber Board of Directors, we humbly request your kind reconsideration of the recent motion to utilize financial accounts outside of the Apopka community. With utmost respect, we acknowledge the city commissioners' responsibilities to make decisions that align with the best interest of our city. However, we firmly believe that the utilization of external financial accounts may have unintended consequences that could potentially hinder the Apopka community. We understand that there will be cost incurred outside financial institutions that our community banks offer here at no charge in the way of, of financial advisements to the city, as well as the potential lending ability for our banks to support our local businesses with expansions, repairs, and new investments being less. As in an organization dedicated to promoting economic health and support for local businesses of all types, the Apopka Area Chamber Board of Directors feel compelled to express our concerns regarding this motion to remove funds from our local community banks at this time. By opting for financial accounts outside of our community, we fear that the local organizations, vendors, nonprofits, chamber, and initiatives that are currently supported by Seacoast and Sanova's banks in our schools, programs, and community will dwindle greatly or go away completely. It is our belief that keeping financial accounts within our community will not only reinforce the community initiatives and educational progress these banks support in our community, but also provide our local businesses' community with the but also provide our local businesses' community with the means to address any challenges that may arise. We kindly request the city commissioners to reconsider this motion, considering the potential short and long-term unintended consequences it may have on the economic well-being, community support, and outcomes of Apopka. We humbly propose engaging in a thorough discussion where the perspectives of various stakeholders, including local businesses and community organizations these institutions support, can be considered. We appreciate your attention to this matter and your commitment to the better of Apopka. The Apopka Chamber Board of Directors stands ready to collaborate with the city commission in exploring alternative, alternative solutions that align with our shared vision for the prosperous of thriving community. Thank you for your time and consideration, and this is sincerely from Kate Manley, the president and CEO of the Apopka Chamber. I do also have a side piece that Francis had prepared for today, and again, unfortunately, she cannot make it. Good afternoon, Apopka City Council. Francis Porta Latin with Seacoast, Vice President Banking Center Manager for the Apopka Branch. Francis has a representative for Seacoast Bank, a community bank, which one of our four promises is to invest in you and your community. When I think of a community or being part of a community, some things that come to mind are like-minded individuals that share common interests, attitudes, and goals. It is a sense of belonging to a group or community to better the place that they share. It could be a place of living or a common ground where time is spent. At Seacoast, we have personally made sure that we live that promise in our community and invest in it, and some of the examples are the Kiwanis Club of Apopka, where Francis is the president for this service club for about the past five years, and this impact of service club is serving our local schools within our city limits. We started the student award ceremony in 2022 in partnership with the city of Apopka and Apopka Chamber and Reimagine Communities. Partnerships continue to grow every year. Apopka High School Key Club, program that is a student-led with the goal to encourage leadership through serving others. Terrific Kids Program is a character-building program that recognizes students for modifying their behavior. The program encourages those kids to become the best version of themselves. Within that, we've, with Lakeville Elementary, we have the Terrific Kids Program, Apopka Elementary Terrific Kids Program, as well as the Phyllis Whitley Elementary Terrific Kids Program. Hispanic Week, breakfast for teachers at Apopka Elementary, sponsored with other partners as well. Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce, where Francis has served as a treasurer for about six years and is current member of the Board Directors, and Seacoast Bank was also the founding partner for the Economic Development Committee. To label all the Seacoast Bank sponsorships that we have done with the Chamber in relation to increased business and growth in Apopka during the past 20 years is priceless. Foliage Saratoma Club of Apopka, a service club that she currently, Francis currently serves as a board director and sponsorship liaison. Programs that we currently support, the Apopka Christmas Parade, Seacoast Bank sponsorship in partnership with the city of Apopka. Service to Mankind Award, Seacoast Bank sponsorship. The John Land Gala Foundation, Seacoast Bank sponsorship with other partners as well. The Jingle Mingle Tree Festival, Seacoast Bank's main sponsor, with all the funds donated are going to the Epilepsy Association of Central Florida. In 2022, Seacoast Bank sponsored the 5K run that was put together by the Apopka Fire Department. Shop with a Cop, Seacoast Bank sponsored in the past years in partnership with the Apopka Police Department. Seacoast Bank partnership with Loaves and Fishes for their annual food drive, Seacoast Bank partnership in the pace, in the past with Hope Community Center Toy Drive, Seacoast Bank partner, new partnership with Reimagine Communities Toy Drive. We also, Halloween in the Park, we've participated in with the city of Apopka. The Music Festival, past partnership with Seacoast Bank sponsorship, city of Apopka. Apopka's Women Club, Foliage Festival, Seacoast Bank sponsorship. Miss, Miss Apopka Scholarship Program, Seacoast Bank sponsorship. Some other areas that we would also.
You need to wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Participate where Francis personally takes ownership to give back to the community, Big Brothers, Christina Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank for your time and your appreciation and your attention in this matter and your commitment to the city of Apopka. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, ma'am, you knew a lot about what just happened, but to Nick Nester's point, I think, forget whatever the chamber say or whatever just has, uh, transpired. I think everybody need to put the citizens first. Our money, our tax money, it need to be invested somewhere where we're going to get the Big Bang five buck. That way, all the, all the roads, the infrastructure that needs to be fixed, we'd already lost money in investing in what that is, secret, uh, First Florida, whatever it was. But I think to Nick Nester's point, I think I don't care if it's out of the country, I don't care if it's up under the table, I think we need to invest the taxpayers' money where we can get the best return.
Oliver McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. We may very well, uh, accept that the Chamber of Commerce has a lot to do with the city, but there's a lot of businesses in the city who aren't associated with the Chamber of Commerce. We also have our opinions, as do the residents. We are currently waiting for a financial audit on the city's, uh, finances, which hasn't been forthcoming. From my perspective, I feel much safer with a company like Morgan Stanley overseeing our financial decisions. We are well aware of what's happened with other local banks, and I certainly don't want to see that repercussion even be likely to, to occur again.
Anybody else want to speak?
Elsa Clark Samuel, I'm from Sanovis Bank. In support of Seacoast, we do a lot of activities as well, I will not go through the long list of what our involvement is, and we do understand that we have to do what is right for the citizens, but here at Sanovis, we were very proactive in making sure we keep rates very competitive with what the, the city has with us. So keeping the funds locally will also help assist small businesses to grow, and I personally have had in hand in assisting a lot of small businesses with, um, lending opportunities. I have seen a lot of businesses coming into, um, the, the, the city, which we get ourselves involved with a lot of the ribbon cuttings, introducing ourselves, providing products and services to help businesses grow. So keeping the funds here and investing in what we have going on here is a big plus for us and for, a big plus for a lot of our small businesses, because they are the root of the community. I'll keep mine short, to the point, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this one? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
Yeah, so I just want to address the comments in the room, I mean, first and foremost, I, I, I thought the Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be partners with this, this body, not to just drop off a letter and, um, voice opposition, because in, we humbly propose engaging in a thorough discussion where the perspectives of various stakeholders, including local businesses and community organizations, these institutions support can be considered. I personally have not received any request to have a engaging and thorough conversation, I don't know if others have, but it's an injustice to whoever spoke here from Sanovis and Ke, Seacoast, that the person whose letter you delivered has not offered that, uh, convenience for us. Um, that's just disappointing that the, the Chamber President would not be able to hand deliver this and speak on her own behalf. But to that end, I mean, Seacoast and Sanovis are great partners, I mean, they are great community partners. I think the spirit of the investment policy, maybe when it was originally written, or the last time it was materially changed, was early 90s, maybe? Um, it's been a while, and I think the spirit of it was true community banks that were in the confines of this particular city. Not to diminish the value that Seacoast or Sanovis provide, but Seacoast is the eighth largest in terms of market share in the city of Orlando, or the Orlando metropolitan statistical area. And regardless, and, and a lot of our funds are still at Seacoast, they haven't moved, same thing with Sanovis. In fact, Seacoast is, uh, latest American banker report, I think the fourth or fifth best bank to work for in the entire country, and I have to believe that that's due to their community involvement, the culture that they have within their bank, with their people, regardless of any particular branch deposit, because I know how competitive, I'm in banking myself, so I know how, how that can be, you want to make sure that your branch is thriving, you can meet the needs of your community that you're in. But at the same time, these are large organizations as well, I mean, they have a lot of deposits outside of the city of Apopka. Um, and I think all of the, the discussions that we've had thus far have been making sure that we have the best return for the money of our taxpayers. Um, and I think we've started marching down that point with preceding conversations on this topic, we've had multiple presentations, both by, uh, the policy advisors that we've entered into an agreement with, and yet we've heard no feedback from this body. It's quite disappointing that they would just, I'm not, I'm not saying that against any of the people that have spoken here personally, I just, the, the Chamber President should know better.
Well, when we were devising the policy and talking about revising it and amending it, I didn't think it was our intention to take the money outside of the city and invest it someplace else. Uh, and we talked about not putting all the money into one pot, and, and I understood that. Uh, and I, I firmly believe that those financial institutions that are inside of our city that supports not only just city residents, but also support the businesses in this community, uh, we, we, we should support them as well. Uh, it, it's, it's been a family, and that's what we, we are, we, we're a small community, we are a family-oriented community, and I think we need to remain that way. And so I didn't think that we were taking our money and taking it out of these banks that we have in this city of Apopka and placing it elsewhere. So that's, that's my comment.
Well, the previous policy was basically written as such to say, they had to have a branch presence within our city limits, the, the previous policy. So it could be at Bank of America, which is the largest bank in our, in our country, but as long as they had a branch here, it would, it would be in accordance with the policy. I think the policy as it states now is, we're going for the best return possible, regardless of where that bank exists. There are certain criteria, obviously, they have to meet in terms of liquidity or, uh, collateralization, or the ability for our funds to be insured properly, but we're, we're going after the best, best return for our money.
Okay, during the presentation that was made by Morgan Stanley, the investment program, you can't hear me? Long-term goal was presented, and it gave an allocation of how our investment polo, um, portfolio would look long-term, not today, long-term. In that allocation, and we can change this allocation at any time, it is showing about 10% for the QPDs, okay? But also, 50% of that portfolio is like overnight investments. So even like with the SBA is 15%, um, Florida End of Government Pools, 15%, and money market funds are 10%. So we can, you know, still use the QPDs, and this allocation can change, that's a goal, that's not what we're going to move to tomorrow, it's a long-term goal. We do have other steps that we need to take before getting to that point, and we talked about an implementation plan, which included identifying the cash flows and use of funds from the 2023-24 budget. We have to analyze interest rate projections, you know, it's a lot of things that we have to do before we get to that point, so it's not tomorrow, but that is the long-term goal, and those allocations can change at the request of this council.
I'm kind of understanding from this letter that the, the Apopka Chamber and the two local banks that we do use, they feel like we're taking all our finances out of the city and investing it all in with, allowing Morgan, uh, to kind of manage the finances, but we're not doing that.
Not 100%. And again, that's a long-term goal, and we have acquired Sanovis Bank as our custodial bank.
Right.
For those particular services, where we buy those securities, and they will be the, you know, the custodian of those securities, so we do have an additional relationship with them as well, but nothing is going to happen overnight. And every step we take, when we come back to this council with an investment strategy, will be presented to this council before we move anything, we have thresholds in there. If we choose to move $10 million or more, that will require council authority.
Okay. Kate, we were, your name has been mentioned, you, the letter, we just got your letter, you want to come up and talk about?
Kate Manley, Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce. If it's all right, I know you just received the letter, so I didn't know if I would get here, but I'm going to go ahead and read it, if that's okay?
We've already.
Oh, you have? Okay. Um, well, sorry, it just popped in, but, um, you know, we're very concerned about some of the, some of the things that our banks, our local banks are able to support, they're a huge support, um, with regard to some initiatives like Read Around the City, um, Kiwanis, um, many of our educational sponsorships that also extend to our businesses, our local businesses, as well as some of the, um, some of the things that may happen if this amount of money were to leave the community, um, a, as far as lending abilities to some of our smaller local businesses. So, uh, the board of, you know, the Chamber of Commerce feels very strongly that we would really like you to consider, um, another way to, um, create a process that we agree with, you know, the need for transparency, but doesn't remove the funds from the community. Whenever we do initiatives, you know, that are on the ground, um, you know, picking up trash or having a, having a reading, you know, on a location, those are things that we're going to lose. We're not, we're not going to have that with the relationship with somebody that is not in the, in the city. So, I'm just wanting you to consider those unintended consequences when, um, making your choice on this, if that makes sense.
So, so I'll come right out of gate, um, I was disappointed that we got this letter without you presenting it.
I'm sorry, I was a cardiologist.
What I keyed in on was, you make a statement here, "We humbly propose engaging in a thorough discussion where the perspectives of various stakeholders, including local businesses and community organizations, these institutions support can be considered." Why now? Why when we're basically going to take a vote on this resolution, when we've had many public hearings on this investment policy? Does this get dropped in our lap?
Great point. Um, it, I was not aware that it had moved forward, I missed the, um, the council, I, I typically watch and also look at the minutes after, and I missed that it had approved the first time. It, it has been a hot topic, both, you know, here in council, but also even on social media, and there was so much noise around it that I did not know it had passed the first time, or I, I, I didn't know it even came to be on agenda for approval the first time, and then realized that. that there was one last, you know.
Yeah, I'm struggling with it being a hot topic, because I, again, I've not received one email asking for a conversation either by the chamber or any chamber members that might be impacted by this. This is the first I'm hearing of it. So to have a meaningful exchange, or exchange of ideas or concerns, you know, this is not the place to do it, because we're limited to four-minute presentations about people's points of view. Again, I would argue that Seacoast and Sanovis do it based off of cultural fits within the communities that they serve, more so than their ability to be hamstrung in terms of their financial ability to deliver the financial services that they can provide. Meaning, Sanovis is a $50 billion bank. Seacoast is an $11 billion bank. Their lending limits are not going to be impacted. Their ability to provide financial services to our community and our citizens is not going to be impacted. I think that our policy and how it stated before, where we did have rules in place around money staying within institutions that were here in Apopka, was when institutions were headquartered here, and if you did take $80 million out of a bank, it would severely impact their liquidity position, their ability to lend, legal lending limits to be able to service their business community. So this conversation has a lot of legs to it, that I think we're doing a disservice by just kind of dropping this on this board at this point. I just think it was.
I understand. Commissioner Becker, when I identified that it was on and going to be in an upcoming agenda item to actually pass the motion, I actually reached out to our two local banks that have accounts. So Frances unfortunately had to leave, and she was planning to come when we found out that it was on agenda today. She had an emergency she had to run and take care of, a big enough emergency she couldn't be here. She did not know that it, she did not know until I let her know, as well as Elsa, that this had passed through. They did not, based on what Frances was able to discover in her research, they did not receive the RFP invitation to be able to submit, to be able to keep funds here. They were not, they didn't know to go look, but were not on those threads to be able to, you know, put in to keep the accounts here, based on her research. And what both of the bank branches have told me is that this is how their budgets are determined for how much they can do in communities, based on the investment level from, you know, the cities that they're in. So I understand, yeah, you're absolutely correct with, you know, they're big institutions, but they determine their budget for spending and community impact that way.
You know, I know Commissioner Becker, and I guess we talked, the banks were not maybe as informed as maybe they should have been, and I'll take some of that credit or blame as well. We haven't had a policy since, or hadn't had an updated policy since the 90s. Can I make a suggestion that we table this until the January 3 meeting? And you have a chance to meet with the banks and see if there's, you know, some way we can get to a point where everybody's comfortable. I mean, we can meet the banks along with each of the commissioners, and then obviously have Blanche, but it's.
Can I just ask Blanche? Because I mean, this has been going on for more than three months. And I do remember, and I will echo what Commissioner Becker said, we have a great relationship with Seacoast and Sanovis. But this came up, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Nesta, can you tell me how long ago this came up?
I mean, we approved.
No, when we started to talk about.
This was probably a year ago, that we actually initiated conversations in reference to this, and creating and updating a policy.
And I do remember President from Seacoast, Frances, being in the audience when we were first considering it. And then I remember when Morgan came in and made the presentation. I mean, it has been very public. At this point, tabling it, and now we're going to start talking to the banks. I mean, we've invested a lot of time, research on your part.
Yes.
Morgan has actually gone through our finances and determined how they were going to.
That will be in our next step, yes.
I mean, I understand what they're saying. What would be the impact on our two local banks if we took 10 million or 15 million? What would be the, I'm not a finance person, I mean, I do rely on you, I rely on the experts to kind of explain to me what the impact is. And up until this moment, for me, the impact was that the investment would allow us to bring in more revenue for the city. But this is telling me that we're, you know, by taking an investment outside of the city, that we're disrupting all these small businesses, and that we're disrupting their capability to continue to sponsor and donate to the local 501(c)(3). That's how I'm reading this. And I don't believe that that was our intention, and I don't believe that by going with an investment firm, that it will impact them that negatively as what this is saying.
So I don't want to oversimplify what Seacoast or Sanovis might do from an operational perspective, but, you know, at its core, when banks have to satisfy certain CRA requirements, so they have to serve the communities in which they operate. So if we have a branch in Apopka, they've got to service the needs of Apopka residents, both from financial products and services, as well as loans to individuals that are low to moderate income. They have to do certain community involvement to, that was a great list that she had provided in terms of all the events that they do. So there are certain requirements that they do there. And again, if Sanovis gets certain budget allocations for stuff like that, based off of deposits that are held within that institution at that branch, because they do, you know, all the cost centers at these big banks, they know at a branch-by-branch level how they're performing. Because, again, you want to have profitable branches. Now, I argue that, you know, the impact or potential impact that we have right now with the dollars that we have on deposit with these institutions, it wouldn't jeopardize their ability to write loans for people within our community, offer products and services, things like that. It may impact, to their point, and, you know, rightfully so, what we're concerned about is their ability to impact community organizations and community members. But again, I don't think that evaporates by what we're discussing here. And I don't think that this is an immediate impact to Seacoast or Sanovis. This goes along with the idea, what you said, the QPD allocations, things like this that stay within depository institutions, is still going to be a material amount of money that our city has.
Well, if I can jump in here too, if I remember correctly, in Sanovis, I think we have something like $7 million. We haven't touched it at all, it's been sitting there. In Seacoast, we had something like $5 million.
No, that was the CD. We have about $38 million now.
Why, no, we do now, but I'm saying, we had $5 million. They were still doing all these initiatives with the city then. We put another $32 million in there, and it was a good relationship here. We're giving you guys lots of money to hold, you're giving us a very good rate of return. And now it's just bizarre that this is coming back in this capacity that, I guess, the relationship isn't, I guess, happy anymore, or it's very bizarre, the timing is very suspect as well, because this doesn't guarantee or move any money right now. We're not doing this tomorrow, this isn't saying tomorrow we're removing all those funds, but at the same time, again, it's a give-and-take relationship. We have the funds in there, and they're giving us a rate of return for holding those funds. So I appreciate what both banks do in our community, obviously, but to the commissioner's points, that's not going to stop if we take every dime out, nor is that our intention either. So I don't, the timing of this is just so strange.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, it doesn't preclude us, because the policy states around, you know, if, outside the parameters of what Morgan Stanley, Morgan Stanley, remember?
Morgan Stanley.
Like, if you were to go down to your level to do it, like the provisions in here too, yeah, you got bids and things like that, but similar to how we dispose of property, if we have bids that are within a couple basis points of each other, and the higher basis points is of a non-local bank presence, and the one that's a couple basis points or 10 basis points lower, but yet does the community involvement as we've described here, I would hope that you have the discretion to come back to council and say, hey, we would prefer to put it over here, even though, you know, we're talking base, now if we're talking 50 basis points, 100 basis points, it's a different conversation. But still, nonetheless, there's provisions in there for us to be able to do that.
Yes. Like I said, anything 10 million or more has to come to council for approval.
And that, again, this is a policy, it's not set in stone, it's not anything that we can't say, you know what, for this and that, we can massage it a little bit and make it work. So, again, the timing of this is odd, and I think we've needed a policy for a very long time, it needed to be updated. The president's money is very important, and it helps to keep taxes low, but also make sure our funds are invested in a safe capacity as well, which they currently are. So again, the timing of this is strange. We're, I'm speaking for myself, I am out at all events, most of these events, so it's odd that none of this has come up when I'm sitting in offices or sitting out with other entities that have spoken today, that this doesn't come up. So I'm okay moving this forward, we can massage it as we need to down the road, I don't want to belabor this any longer. It's just strange, the timing is strange to me.
Well, I don't want to discount their presence being here, so I don't want their presence being here, that there is some concern.
But what's the concern? The concern is, are you avail, can I call you last week? Can I call you the week before, when we've been talking about this for months and months and months? Yes. So, and we've interacted with these banks in different capacities and different timelines and all that. So, and if we needed to be, if these banks needed these deposits for their own success, maybe they've made investments that lock this in, and now these rates of return are not attractive to them, put this in a CD, put this in something that locks us in and let us know that, but that was never the discussion upfront. So now, I'm not discounting their concerns, but at the same time, the timing is suspect.
Well, I think when the decision was made to move the money from one bank to another bank, was based on the fact that this bank was giving us a higher rate of return. And so that's why we put it there. And so now that it's there, and now we're saying that that's not good enough.
No, we're saying, let's have options and make sure that, we appreciate what you're giving us, but if I can invest over here in a six-month CD that's going to give me more than 50 bips above what we're currently getting, then we need to have that discussion, because it's not our money, it's the people's money, it needs to be what's best for them.
But we're not moving any money today.
No, we're not.
That's why this is bizarre, the timing is bizarre.
The only thing I will ask, you know, at some point, because, I mean, I have all my council meetings, and you've presented, and they have, if we can just kind of get a timeline of how long we've been discussing this, I just feel that this letter is basically saying, all right, if you guys move this forward, this is all going to fall apart, because I'm not getting that.
And keep in mind, the allocation that was proposed is long-term, not tomorrow. Again, we need to assess the cash flows. We're going to need funds that are in our banks overnight to cover our ongoing operating expenses.
Right, the day-to-day operations, and for an emergency, when the hurricanes, I know that, I know that we plan well for that. And to the point that Commissioner Nesta said, was that when Seacoast was holding 5 million, I mean, Seacoast was doing so much for us, and I'm a member of many of the organizations that Seacoast also sponsors, and they have been very generous. You know, we have a lot of businesses that also have been very generous. I'm just kind of getting that now, it's, this letter is kind of telling us, don't take anything out of the city of Apopka because of the businesses and the sponsors and the 501(c)(3), but what about the taxpayers? We want to be able to make more revenue so that we can have money for the infrastructure. These are the things that we're hearing from our residents. The developments are coming in, they want better streets, they want, you know, more services. They're concerned with the police department, we got to bring in more police officers, the fire department is growing, we're now planning to take a big bond out to, you know, build a big city building, public service building. So those are the things that we, as a council, have to consider, and so we have to do something with what we have so that we can invest and have more. I mean, it's not, like you said, we're not moving the money tonight, or tomorrow, or next month, this is a long-term process, and it's going to take a partnership. And Morgan Stanley has committed to that they will keep us, you know, they will keep us abreast, and they will come in and ask us and advise us, and we have our CFO, which is you, we have our attorney. I mean, there's so many moving parts in this. And to say, no, all of a sudden, when we've been working on this, I mean, we have been working on this for almost a year.
And I would say too, to give a little bit of comfort to the two banks that are represented in this room, I mean, the past half a year, 10 months, we've been in a very aggressive rising rate environment, where it's been highly competitive to search out and seek that higher rate for our deposits, but that rate environment is plateauing a bit. Yeah, it still may creep up a little bit, but it's expected to kind of plateau for a bit. So the idea of having to go and search out competitors to find the extra two or three basis points, I don't think is going to be present in the hyper-short term. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, there's indicators that would suggest, so.
And these banks, they're one of the highest-rated QDPs.
QPDs.
Yes, those, in the state. The state ranks them the highest, so we know that it's a safe investment currently, based on what the state is telling us. So, again, we thought we had a good relationship going on, and now I'm getting that it's not, I guess. And again, this has been discussed for months and months and months and months, so to bring this up now and say, you're going to destroy the local economy, I think is unfair.
I don't want to table it. I think we've come far enough.
Are we done discussing that?
Yeah. I think it's.
Yeah, no, it's.
Yeah, I would move to approve the investment policy.
The motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Well, do we have? Oh, yeah, we are, yeah.
Second by Mr. Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Three to two passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blanche. Mr. Nesta, you want to start us out?
Sure.
Sorry to beat this point, but you work and operate in City Hall all day, every day, and yet you just hung your finance director out to dry, because this is a piece of legislation that you would have had your eyes on full-time. And you leave her out, and you hang her out there to dry by doing a no vote, when you knew what the language of this was. That's just, gosh, I hope your staff is watching this. It's just, it's disgusting.
So, I mean, were you aware of this before today? Before the moment that we got this?
Yes.
But at no time, no one even contacted any of us to this express this.
Well, that's the reason I wanted to table it from, unless we.
No, I'm not going to table it. We've been doing this.
Oh, I know, it's bad, it's over. So.
And he's right, I mean.
No, the city won. The city won.
Our CFO, Blanche, has put so much time and effort into this.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, I'm going to bounce around here a little bit. I just wanted to reiterate that the printed agenda, we had a lot of agenda changes over the last 72 hours, so just want to say the printed one has removed Business Item 4 and 5, so I just want to make sure that's, but the one online is correct. Just want to do that. Can we discuss the New Year's Eve block party? There are so many changes that are going on, and again, I'm getting updates from social media more than anything else, so.
Sure, sure.
What's, I guess, what's the new?
Let me give you the timeline, and I don't have the days, but maybe not even the months. But, so, I'm going to say June or July, Mike from Groove Slayers calls me and says, hey, Mayor, we'd love to do something in the city of Apopka for New Year's Eve. I go, hmm, that sounds kind of exciting, I like the idea. And so I said, you know what, we do it on Fifth Street, let's get the folks on Fifth Street to, you know, put this together. And I said. And I said, let's, got with Radley, we're talking about, you know, helping, helping them out with, you know, police protection and the, the stage and, and the incidentals. I said, but I need you guys to pay for the band. You know, we, we, we need to have, be a partner, not just a single, one-sided agreement. So, then I said, you know what, it would be really cool is to do a, a ball. So, it's like New Year's Eve ball in, in New York City. So, I, I called my Rotary Club. I said, hey, guys, what do you think about, let's, let's funding the engineering class at Apopka High School for a ball? And they said, oh, that sounds great. So, it's, so I said, any idea what it's going to cost? Mike McQuitty runs the engineering program for Apopka High School. So, Mike, Mike says, oh, let's, he then ran some numbers, and so he came up with a number of $5,000. So, I went back to my Rotary Club, I said, hey, guys, y'all, can we go ahead and fund the ball, which will be kind of a cool thing, you know, Apopka Rotary, along with the engineering program, and the Main Street merchants, or Main Street, whoever they want to call it, Fifth Street, we're going to do this New Year's Eve party. So, I, a month later, Groove Slayers calls and, hey, we hadn't gotten a check from whoever, Fifth Street, whoever. I said, huh, okay. So, I called, said, hey, hadn't got a check. So, 30 days later, you finally get a check for the down payment deposit on the band for New Year's Eve. And then, last Friday, I guess, Thursday, Friday, the, they called and said, hey, we, we need help, we need you to, to pay for the band, that, that's not, we, we can't, we can't do it. Or, I guess it was, I'm not sure if the Main Street was going to pay for it, or that was, you know, supposed to be on the agenda for this, this, tonight, today. I don't know whether the Main Street, you know, they came back with a new proposal, which was 25,000 up front and 25 at six months, which the, the, the whole Main Street Board is three people all associated with Propagate. And I didn't think that was fair to anybody within the CRA, which is what the Main Street would, who they would represent. So, anyways, they, they, they say on Friday, well, if, if, if you guys can't cover it, we're out. Okay, so, that's pretty, pretty, you know, direct. And I said, okay, well, if that's, that's the way you want to go, let's, I mean, I've got my Rotary Club involved, I've got the engineering program involved, I've got Groove Slayers on, you know, they're, they're committed to, to play in. So, I go, okay, well, let's, who else could we, you know, get, you know, to, to, to handle this, this New Year's Eve party? So, first I called was, was Ed Conlon at Beef O'Brady's, obviously a great supporter of, you know, the community, and he said, no, I'm, he's, he, he quits early, at eight, nine o'clock, and he's done. So, I said, well, how about, you know, Hurricanes has outdoor street parties there, and have had Groove Slayers, they had them there for, I think, the Halloween party. So, I said, hey, Mike, are you interested in that? He goes, sure, I'm, I'm all in. So, he's, it's Friday night, he's, he's in, I, I, and, and then the, the folks over at, Caitlin calls me and says she releases the band to, to Hurricanes. And here we are.
So, what's that event, I guess, now look like it's in their parking lot?
Yes. Which they've done them multiple times.
And it's, that's, and it's my own clarification, maybe it's city attorneys. It, they don't need an permit for that because it's a private parking lot.
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's, the understanding. Now, I guess in reference to the Main Street group, because that was supposed to be, I guess, presentation on here, got removed. Are we done with that, or what's that? Is that conversation still being massaged, or what does that look like?
Well, that's a, a great question. I mean, I, personally, I was uncomfortable that you got three people on the executive board that all represent Propagate. I mean, it's just, that's the bottom line. You got, you got the shit of Farms that runs the deck, you got the, the folks at Propagate, and then the, the accountant that, I guess her daughter works for him. So, for us to do a, a Main Street where you got one business that represents the whole executive board, to me, doesn't make sense. Now, if you wanted to add, you know, quite honestly, within the CRA is, is our, is our hotel, the Hilton. If you wanted to add somebody in the Plaza, let's say, on 441, the old one that Lou Hobner used to be in, that, that one. If you wanted to add the, the, the center right up here, you know, any, any other businesses within the CRA that, and even, you know, you could even add community health centers. I mean, they're right, right in the heart of our, our CRA. But for us to, 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 to fund $50,000 to an entity that's being run by three people all associated with one business makes absolutely no sense. And so, I, I'm, would love to have a Main Street. I mean, there's some great, great successes out in, you know, Orlando's got them, you know, four or five of them. A, a lot of, a lot of cities have Main Street programs that are, that are, that are successful. But, you know, you got to go in with the right, you know, I think the board, and, and having them all associated with one business makes absolutely no sense.
But when they made their presentation, didn't we know that?
I didn't.
Didn't we know that, who the board members were? We didn't know that they were all associated with Propagate. So, wasn't there some due diligence before they came before us for the $50,000?
They, they were still in, they were still formatting the Main Street itself, the original presentation. I recommended that they take out that slide that showed those, those members, because they were still formulating the, the Main Street, the, the board and the, the structure of it. And, and that was my cautionary flag for them was, you know, you got to look at diversifying your board to make sure that you represent the whole area, not just one, one business or one area.
I think it may be worthwhile, because their ideas were really cool, and I think very successful. So, I think if we can, and I know everyone hates us, workshop it in some capacity, that we can have some open dialogue, bring some other entities in, to your point, and, and get something done, because I think there was a lot of value with what they were bringing.
100% agree with you.
So, I would like that.
Yes.
Let's do something more, because I don't want to see that just go away. There was, they, it doesn't need to be exactly what they said, but there was a lot of good ideas there that really recreated and helped.
Absolutely.
I, I, I agree completely. The, I, I think that once we, once we talk with them and get that diversification in there, we can bring it back as another quick presentation, just to show what, what, what it's capable of for the whole area, and then, and then come back to the following meeting with, with the funding, you know, with the funding, how that would be structured.
You know, having a bank on there would be nice. You know, you have both, both, both banks that were here today, both are in the CRA. And so, yeah.
I heard what you're saying.
The right board, absolutely, 100%.
Understood.
Think it's, it's, it's what we ought to have.
Okay. Yeah, because that, like I said, that, I, I really liked seeing what.
Sure.
What they had. The next one was, and I don't know if the rest of you guys all got this in your mailbox as the commissioners, is a unsigned letter effectively threatening a resident.
Yeah.
And I will give this to our city clerk as, as a.
Got it.
Well, I'm going to make sure, for sure. And it just, I, these letters are, they're so strange to get, and, and if you're not going to sign your name, it just reeks of desperation. And again, to attack a resident, to us, what, what's the value? What are you doing? I, I, I just don't understand the point. I want to make sure our residents are safe. Yes, we all are going to have differing opinions, and that's okay. Just address it directly. Don't send me sketchy weird letters and, and, in this capacity. So, Susan, I'll be, again, just making sure that you have this as a public record.
Can I span on that? Because it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. I hope the author of that letter comes into these chambers.
Me too.
And stand, and stand at that lectern, because the person that they're attacking, and most of it is personal attacks, and disgusting personal attacks, is how can you fault a person who comes into these chambers and speaks from their heart about how they want to see the city run? And I would argue, I would challenge that person to come in here and rebut the facts that he has. Now, granted, if people come to that lectern and make personal attacks, and make personal accusations that are unfounded, our chair has the ability to enforce the rules of decorum as it relates to the public comment period.
Absolutely.
In fact, it's the board's response, or the chair's responsibility to do so. And if he willingly needs, does not do so and allows people to make those attacks, that's his own issue. But this gentleman gets up and talks about code enforcement issues, or how money should be spent, or concerns about infrastructure, or using our tax dollars in a responsible manner. How on earth is that out of bounds for what a resident should be doing within these council chambers? And to sit there and, on that letter too, first of all, give me a break. You're not going to sign that and say that it's on behalf of 300 concerned citizens?
Seems to be a theme here locally.
Give me a break.
And did we all receive this letter?
We all did. And apparently, and funny enough, apparently the letters were, they happened to be on the front area, and, and nobody knows who they're from.
No.
So, they were dropped off? I guess that's my question too. How do they get into my mailbox?
Well, that was my concern, because I said, how, how did these letters get to, into our mailbox? Because you have to kind of sign in, check in, or, or outside is allowed to come into the area where we have our mail and fill the, the mailboxes. So, this is, the letters were found while the receptionist, you know, said she had to take a break, you know? She's entitled to go to the bathroom. When she came, she found a bunch of letters there, and there were no return. I showed her the envelope. I said, do you remember this envelope? Did you put this in my mailbox? And she did. She, she put them in each of our mailboxes.
Mrs. Bone.
So, maybe what, what we should ask is, when.
No one.
Mail comes in like this, that it should not be put in our mailboxes.
So, that's, I mean, it, it's just strange. So, and, Mrs. Bone, did you want to reference something?
I was going to say that I also received that letter, so.
Okay, so it was addressed.
It was just an office and, and an envelope with no, it actually came.
Right, and they, and, and my.
Didn't have any return address.
Right, and my, my last name, as always, was misspelled. So, I, I'm, my concern was, how did it get into our mailboxes? Because I, I know the process of where our mailboxes are at.
How, so, Mr. Hitler, how long is the camera footage kept?
30 days.
30 days? So, we should have, we should have footage of the front lobby area? Within the last 30 days.
Within the last 30 days. I actually got it after, I actually got it after the last council meeting.
Yeah, so it's between this council meeting and the last one.
I can get with Joanna and see if she can remember what day, because that's going to be, we don't, we don't know time or day, that's.
A full day.
No, I mean, if we can get it down to a day, that's fine.
Oh, we'll watch 30 days worth.
I just think it's important for, to figure out who did this when it's threatening a resident. Again, it's, it's our job. We don't have to agree on everything by any means, and many residents don't agree with me, but many do. But whether or not, it doesn't matter. I don't, no resident deserves to be attacked in any capacity. So, zero tolerance for stuff like this, and I just want to make sure that's on the record there. And it would be nice to figure out who did it as well. That's that. New Year's party, printed. So, the, and again, this came from social media, the, I'm not going to have the verbiage correctly, the rebuttal to the Duran case seemed like a unilateral one that we never discussed, in, in the sense that we are just dropping all charges. So, or we're, we're asking to, all, anything to be dropped, that they don't have any claim at all. So, that was never discussed between this board. Was that a unilateral decision you made?
That's the attorney's. I, that, that wouldn't be.
Are we talking about the motion to dismiss that was filed?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, that is not the kind of discussion that is had between an attorney and client when it goes to the procedures of how to litigate the matter. I happen to know about this matter only because Mr. Lawton, who was the attorney who filed it, called me and said, hey, in case there's any pushback, let me explain to you what this is about. And then he went on to explain that for the type of injury that was claimed, there, there is typically workers' compensation immunity, not meaning that there's immunity from payment, but that the payment's limited to the structures of work and compensation if it's a injury that occurs during the course and scope of the work. And the exception is unless the city is found to be grossly negligent, which is something that everybody thinks that they know, but the standard is hugely high.
Ma'am, you need me?
What? Okay, I don't know what that means. But anyway, so, so that's the purpose. And he explained to me that he had spoken to plaintiff's lawyer, and plaintiff's lawyer expected the motion, and because it has a, some level of probability of success, they've agreed to stay discovery, meaning that they won't do any additional work until the court has ruled on this motion to dismiss. So, that's the information that was provided to me in case this question came up. But, but to, again, answer the question, typically, there isn't an ongoing dialogue regarding strategy unless it has to do with the things we had in the shade meeting, for example, with the Southwick case regarding settlement, litigation expenditures, and so forth. However, this is obviously a sensitive matter, and, but the workers' compensation defense is, is the defense.
Okay, I, I, so I understand that. It just, I don't understand the point of us having a shade meeting if that's not going to be.
Well, I don't know if we had a shade meeting on Duran. The only one I know about is the Southwick deal. But to your point, that, it, it has to be in the context of settlement or litigation expenditures related to a strategy. And this is neither one of those things. This is simply a, a standard, you know, this was a work injury in the course and scope of work, it's covered by workers' compensation, and therefore, there can be no additional civil lawsuit. That's why there is workers' compensation. Now, the plaintiff's lawyer obviously thinks they're going to be able to meet that gross negligence standard, at least for the purposes of defeating the motion to dismiss. But again, because both sides acknowledge that it has some chance of success, they're not doing anything else until that's ruled on. Because once that's ruled on, if that does go the way of the city, it's over and subject to appeals. And if it doesn't, then you'll probably have one of those shade meetings we talked about.
Okay. I just, to your point, that it is a very sensitive topic, which absolutely makes sense, and it should be, having as much information for us in shade meetings and things like that as possible is very valuable. So, when things like that are, are going forward, I know you're not our main attorney on that case, so to speak.
I didn't even know till it was done. I didn't even know he was talking. I, I just said, Mr. Lawton, I'm going to go, I didn't even know who it was.
Gotcha.
But he called, and then he said, I'm the lawyer, and then he explained to me what happened.
And I guess I, I can articulate directly to our, our attorney then, that more discussions need to happen on, on this front, so we're not surprised via social media. And the last one is, it goes into, there's a lot of issues of racism that were brought up during public comments, and I think we need to address those in some capacity, whether through an ordinance, ordinance or resolution or policy, that, again, we just, obviously, and I don't, I want to make sure that it's just clear that we don't, we're not okay with it, we don't approve of it, and should we find out who not, who destroyed cars, things like that, that it will be dealt with, that this is a safe place for our residents to be, similar to this letter, no attacks need to be made. So, I think in the future, the near future, we need to be looking into something like that to, again, support all of our residents. That's it.
Mr. Smith?
... ago, even prior to me being on the council, that same display was being put up. And I called the police to report it, and the report came back that it's a freedom of speech, and so that they were not breaking any laws. So, there was nothing the police could do, is what I was told when I reported it. And so, I went and sat probably for about a good couple of hours during the Halloween time, and that particular display probably got more visitors than the entire community. So, that says something about the display, and I'm going to leave it at that. But, but it didn't just happen two years, they do it every year, they've been doing it for the last six years. I did attend the Music To My Mind concert on Sunday, very outstanding project, and I think it's something that we, we need to get behind and assist them, some funding, so they can do some, some more things in that area. Where are we in reference to annexation? What did we finally decide to do?
I, I'm, I'm ready to do whatever y'all want to do. I, I, we, we kind of got hot and heavy there for a while, and now we haven't heard until[1761.33] I, I, we, we kind of got hot and heavy there for a while and now we haven't heard until last three or four meetings we haven't talked about. I, it's what, what's the interest?
Well, my interest is still the annexation. And I think it was asked as to how far we was talking about what area. And, and I mentioned before, I think we should go all the way to McCormick Road, since we already have city limits on McCormick Road to go to that and just fill in all of that area. And that's, that's my point of view.
So.
I guess we're gonna I, I mean, I've said this ad nauseam about what I think is the next steps to do, but if, if that's the case, then draft an ordinance and put it in front of the council.
All right.
Well, I think it's, it's gonna potentially fail because like I said before, it's, it's a toss-up right now. We have no, we have no feedback from potential people that would be impacted by what we're trying to do here to understand if it would be successful. By way of survey, you had brought a person before that you, that, that disappeared. So yeah, it's going stale because there's, I don't know.
Like, I can't get consensus, I mean, I'm.
Well, I think the reason why it's going stale.
You put, you put a, a two-page, two-pager of a person who could potentially serve as like a facilitator of this stuff or organize the survey as described, and then there was no follow back up to say, okay, on a formal basis, what do we think? Is this the right person? Do we have other people that would be coming to the table to facilitate this on our behalf? Otherwise, let's just put that ordinance language forward, put it on the ballot and let the people decide.
Well, the response that I'm receiving from residents and unincorporated Apopka is that this council doesn't want it, that we just all talk, and that's why it keeps fading away. And they're saying that we don't want it, and that's what the word is.
But the act, I mean, I, I don't, I don't subscribe to that. Because again, we, we've talked about this many, many times to say, hey, we want to do what's right by the citizens of Apopka, regardless of whether that they're unincorporated or city residents. But the times that we've gone to the workshops, and I don't like use that term loosely. It's been a presentation about how much it's gonna cost versus anything else. There's accusations made by the community that we have ulterior motives in wanting to annex residents into our city. And I think there, there, it's all, there's probably evidence of all of that coming into play. That's why I say we have to have a more, not an us versus them kind of, kind of workshop where you have us up on the dais and everybody there. It has to be in their own terms. Hey, tell me about your, your day to day. What's your quality of life? Do you like living in the city of, or county of Orange? Do you, do you think you would get better services coming into the city of Apopka? We haven't done that at all, whether or not it was facilitated in human form like Mr. Nester was describing, or a mail form or mail document.
From the workshops, what I got from the workshops were the residents that were unincorporated had concerns about the cost for themselves, and they wanted to understand what would be the financial impact for them. And we were unable to provide that to them.
No, I think we scared it with that. I think that was the only conversation that we had was money. Because when, when and it's all about, we gotta pay for this, we gotta pay for a station, we gotta pay for this, we gotta pay for that, we gotta get new garbage trucks. Okay, well, timeout. Hey, resident, do you like the services that you get from Orange County today? Because if you like the services that you have, there's no need to escalate that into a financial conversation because they're happy the way that they are. Then it's more of a, hey, if I'm dissatisfied with my garbage pickup only coming once a week, I would rather have that too. I would much rather prefer having an ISO one rated fire department that's in my backyard versus one that I may have to have longer wait time for respond if I'm in an emergency. Okay, if I find better value in the services that the city can provide, then you have a financial conversation to say, is it worth the extra five cents? Or is it not worth, or they could have savings in some areas. You never know, because you have to look at it on a case by case basis. But we haven't had, that level of conversation has not happened yet.
And then I think we talked about sending sort of a questionnaire to each of the residents in the unincorporated. Then there, again, the cost, that came up. How much is it gonna cost?
The survey?
Yeah, the survey.
Well, we had two different, I mean, that was probably, we never could agree on the next step, which is a survey or, or workshops, whatever, community meetings. Y'all tell me what you want to do, we'll put it together. You want to do, I, I just.
Think of, think about when we do campaign mailers, right? Okay, campaign mail pieces cost, you know, $8,000 to get a good reach of super voters within the city of Apopka. We're not talking that many people in terms of what is impacting of potential annexation. It's much fewer residences, even if areas that we try to clean up the borders, you're still looking at a very small subset of dwelling units. So the cost to print a survey on paper that, you know, like the employee engagement surveys wrong, where if they print it, it puts a watermark on it so people can't do it twice. You have a survey that has a unique QR code. You have the ability to either fill out the survey online one time. You have the ability to fill it out in paper, mail it back if we want to incur the cost of a self-addressed stamped envelope. Or we have a box here at City Hall if people can only walk to drop it off. You give them three channels by which to respond. At least it starts to build some evidence to say, if we put this on a ballot, we've got a 60/40 chance of this passing versus if it's a 40/60, 60/40 chance of not passing based off of feedback. You know directionally that it's not the right investment of time right now. But we don't have any of that, that insight.
Okay, we'll put, so is that consensus? We want to put together a, I, tell me what you want to do, and then we, then we gotta put together that, what that looks like.
Survey would be the best at this point.
I know, but what does that survey look like? If you want to give me your ideas on what the question should be. I mean, I, I know nobody likes to hear about the finances, but I think that has to be a part of the discussion. I, it doesn't have to be all the discussion. You know, you, you can talk about the benefits versus the cost, but I, I think that's gotta be a part of it. Cause if you don't put, I mean, everybody wants a new truck. Everybody wants, you know, a new house, but if, if it's free, that's one thing. If it costs me $60,000 or $300,000, whatever it costs, that's a different, that's, that's a different discussion, so.
But it's, it's gonna vary house to house.
Yeah.
Because of some people, it's gonna be a savings.
Yeah.
And so I don't know how you would convey what it's gonna cost when it's not gonna cost everybody the same thing. I, I think basically, they didn't know what the benefits are, or what the advantages are.
What you do is you break down what it's costing our residents right now and what it's costing them. Cause Orange County has those numbers available, the basic services. We don't want to inundate them with nitpicking little things. The basic services are, you know, the, the garbage, the fire department, whatever it is, just the basic. These are the main, this is what the city residents are being charged. And these are what Orange County is charging, the Orange County. But just four or five things that are important, not little, little things. So I, it's not what's it gonna cost them, just showing them, showing them what, what the cost is. That's all.
Cause, cause on one page you have survey, on the other flip side of that page you could have, cause really, it's really applicable more to the consumption based services. So if I consume services that aren't part of my property tax rate, that then provides the normal basic services.
Right, because some of the residents had concerns that they have septic tanks. So why would utilities be important to them? Although they felt that it wasn't. They were thinking of the military. They were thinking of different services that they felt would now impact them. And some of the residents that showed up at the workshops were concerned that they were already, the seniors only living on social security, obviously were comfortable with what their expenditure was. They were concerned now if they annexed into the city, what would it cost them? So I mean, we have to be honest about that.
Right.
So, but I think a survey would give a, a larger consensus. If we get, all the residents that say, listen, we want to be annexed, then those who don't want to be annexed will have to deal with what was the decision made by the unincorporated residents. Right, isn't that how we win elections? We win by the most people who come out and say, we want you to be, and then the ones who didn't want us have us.
So what I'm asking, then give me the questions you want in the survey.
Right.
Or, or you could, I mean, if you want to work with Jim, let Jim, if you work with Jim on a.
If, if you'd like to send
I would, I would.
Send him your questions.
Yeah, if you want to send me your questions, and what I can do is compile those and then send them out to those, you know, BCC.
We'll bring them the next.
And, and see, we could even do, we could even do a workshop and just make sure we get everybody covered.
The word workshop, I know.
Uh, it's okay, city council meeting. But we could take a little bit just to review the questions.
Questions you want in a survey. If everybody's okay with the survey, we'll send out a survey.
And I, I can put together
I just don't want to complicate it with a lot of residents. You don't want to send them a whole list of, of questions. I, I feel less than 10 questions that, that's important to them as being an unincorporated, what's important to them, and then we would get a consensus. And then to Mr. Commissioner Becker's point, I don't want to put it on the ballot, then it fails, then it never gets addressed again. Then we go, you know, I, I don't want that, cause that happened, what, 1983 or something like that? That it went on the ballot and it failed, and look where we're at now. We're almost 2024 and we're still in the same place.
Well, if each of you could, you know, send me, just, you know, a few questions that you feel would be definitely needed to be asked. I'll compile those and then if anybody from the public has some different questions that they would like us to ask in that, in that survey, that, that would definitely come in handy, I think.
Well, I think, I think the other
They're, they're thinking, they live there, we don't, so.
The other piece that Chuck previously had asked for, again, was not only the questions, but what's the geographic area that we're talking about?
Correct.
Be very specific.
Yeah, and it could, we had originally put together the, the original annexation area that we were, that was, you know, part of those, the workshops that we did. But I can also compile a map and I won't have all the details, cause I got all that from the property praiser, but, and from the county. But I can go down to that McCormick Road limitation also. So it might be two maps and see what, and see what they, they think. Keep in mind though, with the survey, if you, we go down to McCormick, it's like twice as, two, three times as much property. So survey work is gonna be very, very expensive.
And you want to go on social media for people that put out, will put the survey out there, even though it won't be a, a bona fide.
Well, we can put that survey on the website.
Right, so I'm saying.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be, that wouldn't count.
I think you have to be very scientific.
Yeah, I, I.
And you, we could say, here are the questions we're thinking about asking. Do you have any other additional questions you think we should ask before we
That's it.
finalize the survey? That.
That, that's it, that would be.
And we'll have it out. I mean, y'all get it done, we'll, we'll, we can get it out by the, by the end of the year. I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't.
By the end of the year? We're only having this meeting.
That's right, we don't have, yeah, it'd be
We have no year.
After the third, but we'll, we'll have whatever survey kind of laid out for you to
We'll look at the agendas and make sure we have time to, time to discuss those at, at a council meeting.
Okay, so, and I just wanted to listen to everybody during this is that what I think we should do, it's part of the survey. I think we should do an initial survey, still have the facilitator, facilitator come in, start doing some more community meetings, then do an additional survey to see if, cause we have not provided enough education correctly to what this process looks like, what the cost looks like, anything like that. So I, I've had more people tell me that this is a land grab from the city of Apopka. We're gonna cone force foreclose and put multifamily out there. That's what I've heard more than anything. So I think having an initial survey, understanding the concerns upfront, having a facilitator, facilitator come in, do community meetings there within the community, understand, walk through, talk through, and then have another survey that sees, did we gain any ground? Did we build any confidence in this process? With that too, I think we need to allocate a certain amount of funds to this process, to kind of an exploration process. I think just doing it the old college try is gonna do exactly what we've gotten and just get nowhere. Uh, and the survey is gonna be expensive. So if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, and let's take a deep, deep, deep dive. Make sure we have the understanding of what those residents want. And if they don't want this, then we know for sure, and we can check off every box and say, we didn't just send a survey. We did this, we met them, we did group workshops, all that. And if we are gonna do this, we need to do it right, or we don't need to do it at all. So we need to allocate the correct funds to this, and we need to come up with what that number looks like. Additionally, I know police doesn't have nearly enough firefighters or, uh, police officers for this. We're gonna have to spend more money on that. So there's, and they're, and they've said it on the record that they're not ready for this either. So we need to make sure that as we're going through this process, we are coming up with how we're gonna fund this as well. It doesn't go just exclusively on the backs of our new residents. It comes on us. How are we gonna fund this properly? And don't ask them, we need to come up with this. Same thing with fires, same thing with, I mean, we don't have a city administrator right now. We need that as well. The, and economic development director is gonna help to allocate certain funds, get certain grants to residents in that area that helps them redevelop properties, streets, whatever it may be. So if we're gonna do this, let's do it right or not do it at all. So that's my two cents, but if you guys just want to do one survey, that works as well.
Trying to get the consensus, so.
Well, again, I, I, that's, I think creating this comprehensive plan is, is how we succeed at this. I don't think doing one survey is gonna get us there, but if you guys think it does, feel free.
And, and I, I would agree with the process. We, we do, do a survey upfront, get their feedback, then have a facilitator, not one of us, to go and, and do the group meetings and educate them, and then do the survey again. And as you said, see if this land grab thing that's supposed to is out there, if that changes their mind. And then that they're in paper with the second survey, then we move.
So can we just officially kind of make a plan? Because I mean, we're just kind of going along the way. We're just like, all right, let's do this, let's do that. But let's have a plan and let's check the boxes and say, okay, we've done this, we've done that. But we have to have something on paper that we all agree that we're going in the same direction. Can we do that?
But I think we're gonna go and send the questions to Jim.
No, no, I think
The plan, the plan has, the plan
I can't come up with a plan like that.
Resolution, something that says, this is what we're going to do regarding the annexation. But have something that we have that we can say, all right, we checked that box.
Tangible objectives.
Right, so this way, after we've done that first box, now we, we're gonna get three months into it and someone says, well, you didn't do, you know, box A, but we can say, yeah, we did, and we can document that. So rather than just off the cuff and saying, all right, we're just gonna, we're getting your questions, we're gonna send a survey out. But we have nothing in writing anywhere for our residents to see, we have a plan. We've put a plan together and we're following this. And we have a timeframe, whether it's within six months that we get, you know, A, B, and C done, or D. We have to do that. It, it's like anything else, you plan.
Can we, can I?
I'm, I just feel like we're doing things right off the cuff.
Why, great, it's the old college try, that it's really not enough.
No, I don't want to do it that way.
But I'm not saying that's either staff's onus either. We, we're the ones coming up with this. So, I know you don't want to do a workshop, but workshop for us, us exclusively to talk about, okay, step one, we're gonna do this. Here's the sub-goals of that. Here's how we know that we finished it. Step two is this, and again, there needs to be money allocated for this. This is gonna cost money, so what's the appetite for how much money? And then we can direct staff and staff can run with it from there. Everyone telling me otherwise.
Right, because we're gonna be taking time away for the staff to do some research.
Well, here's, here's something that I want to toss out. Number one, our staff, and I don't think any city employee that I've ever worked with has ever gone to work on an annexation of a huge area. We've done subdivisions, totally different.
No, I, no, I remember when they've done two subdivisions.
There, there's been a couple that, that I've done here in Apopka, but we've never done a huge district like this. And it might take a little bit more than just staff and council putting together and a process that could or could not cover, like everybody's saying, all the bases. It might end up being more of an expert coming in to, to do a, a proper way to approach this. Because we, we, like we were saying, we're kind of flying off the cuff to do these. Coming up with questions is one thing, and having it, having an expert coming in to, to review those and other issues might come up. Questions that you have are different than the residents are gonna have. And I think it's important to hit both, both aspects for that. But if, I just think, you know, having a budget of some sort, but that, that's even hard to do because we don't really know the costs involved. It could, any surveys are gonna be based on the area that you send out. And then how do you compile those? How do you?
I feel like once we get those surveys, how does it get reviewed and how does it get?
That's the problem, is the type of survey that you get, whether or not it's just being read by everyone. And, you know, there's not gonna be a yes, no answer for practically any type of question that you get. But how do you compile those and how do you get a, an affirmative or a negative out of any type of survey? Usually, you know, if it's an A, B, C, or D, yes, you can compile this a lot easier than what's your opinion on something. So it, it, it's, might be more of an expert type of thing that has to be done.
But again, I, any, any action that the council takes shouldn't be viewed as we're burdening staff. I mean, we're, we're a board, they're a staff. They, they execute on the policies and decisions that we make as a board. I, I don't, I wouldn't view it as a hierarchical or whatever.
Correct.
It's just, this is the function that we play here. We've talked on this topic long enough. We've talked on this topic long enough for staff to be able to say, okay, I know what Commissioner Velazquez's head's at, I know where Commissioner Nesta, Commissioner Smith, Mayor Nelson, myself, to come up with a plan of attack here. How do we get this to the finish line in terms of a decision point? Sounds like we've got the breadcrumbs of how that happens. Staff, take it away, bring us back a plan of attack, knowing all the pitfalls or the pros and cons of all the things that we've mentioned, and bring it back to us.
Okay.
If, if, if staff has a, if, we get bogged down or something, we'll just come back and ask for another staff member.
Okay.
May take it.
All right. I don't know if this, and this Commissioner Smith brought this up, I don't know if that satisfies his.
Let's get, let's get, let's get a survey out, and then we, let's get that done, and we'll get that, I mean, as soon as we get, next council meeting, as soon as we decide on the questions, we'll immediately get it turned around. You know, we've got, obviously, our utility billing, we have a, we have access to a mail house, it's not, won't be, turnaround will be pretty quick, so we, don't, don't make any like that plans.
She needed something else to do.
Yeah, no, all right. Are you giving it? Good, good, Commissioner Becker?
Okay, just to continue, Radley, or Mr. Williams, sorry, on the Bay Ridge Cemetery front. So we already talked about the people dumping, but it doesn't sound like that was that property. But on the other topic, do you have any updates on terms of progress there?
Yeah, so we have not been able to get any documentation or paperwork from the current caretaker. So the next steps, and the city attorney's office did produce a memo back in September, kind of highlighting some of the, the things that would go into a cemetery takeover, taking the cemetery on. So our next step would be, we would need to do a title search on the property to determine who the actual owner is, see if there's any public documents out there that could help us make that determination on next steps as far as getting the owner to annex into the city, and then look at the city taking on the property. So that, that's going to be our next step in the process. We do have some of the funds in the budget for, that was allocated for cleanup.
Yeah.
So if it's the wish of the council.
No.
To, for us to continue on and try and, with that title search, we can, we can start that.
Yeah, because.
Harder numbers on the, harder numbers on the cleanup, we have a quote for $45,000 to do a full cleanup on the property, and the fencing, which is a similar, similar style fence to what we've done at the Edgewood Cemetery, about $107,000 to fence the whole property.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I want to run this to ground until there, you get to the point where there is no willingness of the property owner to concede the property or annex the property into the city, because at that point, and again, my conversations with her before seems seemed very amenable to that, that course of action.
Yeah, she, she is amenable. I think the questioning comes back to who, is she properly deeded the cemetery?
Got it, got it. So, yeah, I mean, how, how, just so that I can respond to the people that are asking about this in the public, how, like, target wise, when do you think that that would be?
Well, it'll just be a matter of getting the title search started. I'll work with Chuck and the city attorney's office to, and Jim to get that moving. And then from that point, it's just a matter of how long that's going to take to get some documents back to us.
Got it.
And then if, if you'd like, I can come back with an update.
Got it, perfect. That would be appreciated.
Yep, thank you. And then Dr. Patton, in terms of the economic development, so clearly without the December meeting, we're going to go a full year without this being staffed, but is the, are any of those candidates, I believe you're going to start doing some, some screenings of some potential candidates? Is that going? How's that, how's that proceeding?
We screened and interviewed candidates, and we have one that's coming forward, so I was going to talk to you all after a meeting with the mayor.
Okay.
So hopefully I'll bring that individual to you pretty soon, hopefully next week sometime.
You interviewed five, was that right?
Interviewed five, yeah, that's correct.
And that was for what?
Economic.
Economic Development Director.
And what are we doing with the chief administrator's position? Because Chuck Baric has already expressed over and over, even when I've asked him, that he, as far as he's concerned, he's just wants to be the interim until we can get someone permanent.
That's understood. So we put, as you may know, we put out for a bid for a headhunter. So we had 12 applicants, and we're going through those right now. So we have to have a public meeting in order to choose the correct one, or choose the winner, and then, and then we will bring that forward to you.
And when do you think that will be coming before?
I have to get with purchasing to figure out, you know, because we have to notice it and everything, and get the staff together to evaluate all 12. So hopefully we can do that within the next two weeks.
Yeah, but that's just the, just to pick the headhunter.
That's just to pick the headhunter, that's correct.
Just to pick a headhunter.
That's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Baric did say that to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the last one I had was just around our homework assignment from last meeting around the charter dates. So Mr. Shepherd did provide.
He did.
His availability. My, my opinion is the second Wednesday of each month to devote to doing that exercise, and then, you know, that's three months' worth of scheduled, and then whatever transpires based off those conversations, if there's new need for additional, we can just continue down that second Wednesday path.
You're going to make me meet on Valentine's Day?
The second.
I wouldn't know what to do on a Valentine's Day if I didn't have a meeting. It always works out that way.
Three months at least.
Okay, but I did send an email of dates that I was not available toward the end of the month. Did you get it?
I, I don't know whether I did or didn't. I just wanted to make sure that you guys know when I'm available, but even if it's not me, we have four different board certified lawyers, any of them who can do charter review. These are the dates I'm available, so if none of these work for you guys, we'll find somebody. And that's the second and fourth Tuesday, the second Wednesdays, the first, second, and fourth Thursdays, and for you who love Fridays, all Fridays.
Well, and if we can't agree on, like, date certain days, maybe we just agree on the first one, and then we can.
Right, because I, I, well.
And the actual first one should be organizational anyway, in that it'll allow me to explain the process and walk you through. We could do it as a substantive meeting also, but typically it's been, okay, how are we going to do this kind of a thing? But you guys are a council, you've been doing this for a while, so you may not need that extra stuff.
Okay.
So January 10th?
January 10th, well, I would.
January 10th would be the first one? Okay.
You said two hours, is that like a five to seven, or?
It's whatever time you want, but two hours is my suggestion because that's about the limit of most people's patience of talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
Or maybe that's just me, but anyway.
I'd say you'd be surprised.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer in the evening, either it's five to seven, or six to eight, or something like that. Five to seven would be preferred.
Five to seven? Five to seven would be.
So that's on the 10th?
January 10th, 2024, from five to seven, if everybody's agreeable. Then we can set further dates from there.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Becker?
I did, do we need to take formal action on that date?
I, I. I've written it down, and I'm going to be there.
Yeah.
So we'll just.
You'll notice it.
Yep. Please.
Do we say the 10?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, okay.
All right, anything else? I'm good. Commissioner Velazquez?
I think we touched on everything, that's what I had on my list, other than to wish everyone, remind everyone that our second council meeting has been canceled, this is it for the year. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And that's it for me at this point. We've touched on everything that was important to talk about.
All right, Cliff?
Yeah, my report was just to do the date that we just did through Vice Mayor Becker, and so I will see you on the 10th.
I, I have to say this publicly, you are correct, I did receive it, so you did send it to me.
This, we're talking about the answers to Mr. Nesta's.
Right, those were, had to do with the, the questions and the answers, and you did, so my apology, I did get it, I checked, so.
Thank you.
Wanted to clear the air that Clifford did send it to me.
Okay.
On October 4th.
Mr. Shepherd's token response to that, that observation is usually, I know I am.
Yes.
No, that's only just, just, just to you.
He sent me an email to say I did copy you, so then I looked, and I, you did, so I apologize, I did, you did.
All right, under the mayor's report, obviously we brought up the Sartoma Parade downtown, right on Park Avenue, 10 to 12. Saturday night will be the Philharmonic Holiday Pops Concert, the amphitheater, five to seven. December 16th, Saturday, will be the Reefs Across America at Greenwood Cemetery at noon. And Sunday, December 31st, as we've already discussed, will be the, the party at the Plaza at Hurricanes from 8:00 PM to midnight, probably a little after midnight, which is New Year's Eve. One of the things I wanted to just bring to your attention, doesn't look like we're getting any movement on the Form 6. I just want to kind of make sure everybody realizes, and candidates that may or may not be out there. It requires specific local officers to file a Form 6 financial disclosure beginning January 1st, 2024, instead of the Form 1 that they are currently required to file. It specified local officers, including mayors, elected members of the governing body of a municipality, as well as certain candidates for elected office. Form 6 means a reporting individual must disclose his or her net worth and the value of each asset and liability in excess of $1,000.